On that one.
All right.
We're ready, we've got life on.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order, Hubbardston Planning Board, and announce that Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. We do have a quorum, so we open our meetings with, you know, we didn't have our name tags out.
Can't find them, but I'm gonna order them.
Oh. That's all right. Eric Dak, Christopher Monroe, Bill Holman, Francois Steiger and Alice Libdal are the members, since we don't have our, our name tags.
Are we breaking the rule?
Generally, I call for public comment, but that doesn't include items that are actually agenda items. You'll get a chance to speak to those, and I don't see any other member of the public here. So, we, we do it in the end. If somebody comes in late, they can speak at the end, a second one. We don't have minutes to approve tonight, I believe. So, we're gonna move to our first, on the agenda, action items, which is a request for a special permit extension for twenty-six Worcester Road. Worcester, yes, that was the one we fixed. And I did fix it in here. So, this has been, what they're signing has been distributed to the board to read in our documents, but I want to tell the board that Bill added, Bill proof, Bill read it and had a couple of corrections, well additions, because we have to make a specific finding that the board finds credible causes for delay, so he added that language. And then, the other thing is that I changed this a little. This is not a special permit. It was an earth removal restoration permit, and it isn't important, except that a majority is always needed. In a special permit, you'd need a supermajority. So, we need three signatures tonight. And I think people pretty much are familiar with this project, except probably Christopher, who came on the board later. So, we'll give you a one-minute summary. Is that the Catesto Trust, and Anne Smith is the trustee, who's sitting right there, is, was a farm that had, it's a big, a big piece of land, but they had, I've forgotten how many acres, but you could tell me.
Open?
That were, yeah, in the pit.
Seven.
Seven, okay, out of?
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah, if I remember, something like, anyway. And they, it wasn't really just gravel they took out, but it was clay. And so, it had to be restored, because it had a gravel permit license, and she wants to sell it. And so, we went through a really big process on how to do that, but basically, it's regrading, which of course, you have drainage and all those issues. Bill put quite an extensive set together with us. And then, a company called Casella.
Organics.
Organics was gonna come and add short paper fiber sludge from the Irving Paper Mill to the sand that they have on the property still.
Overburdened.
Yes, and.
The loam.
Loam, right, and create a synthetic soil for the top. It's used, been used by farmers in town. The reason it's sort of prized sludge is because it's, it's not sewage sludge, really. I mean, it comes out of a treatment plant, but it's almost all short paper fiber, few homes. So, it was all this great plan, and then COVID hit, and the plant kind of shut down. There just wasn't a demand for their product, so there was no sludge, so it's been put off.
There's no paper drawn.
And I think they made tissue paper. They make a specific type of pa- anyway, it wasn't in demand. We know that, because we've been in touch, he's, he's been in touch with us. So, we want to extend it for two years to allow that to happen. And in the meantime, the trust is selling the property to Alan Crane, who I believe is our other guest tonight, right?
Yep.
So, you, they've had a chance to read this, and I've made the correction. The only thing, he's gotta follow all the same stuff. It just gives him a two-year extension. And we hang on to the bond, because the bond is, of course, to secure that the work is done. And if it weren't done, we, at the end of two years, we could spend it to get it done. But in the end, assuming you do it right, it gets returned, and you, and this always becomes tricky. Do you return it to the person that put it up, or the person that owns the property? So, I have specified in this, it's to the person that owns the property at the time of the sale.
Yeah, it's gonna transfer to our.
It's gonna transfer to Alan.
That's in our purchase and sales agreement.
Okay, okay, just so you know, that we're returning it to you, to Alan.
Right.
Right, at the end. Okay, so if everybody's ready, we'll take a vote on extending.
I don't have a copy of that one.
Yep.
Sorry.
It doesn't, you, there's, it's all, it's the same as what's in the documents, except Bill's line, "The board finds credible causes for delay." And I fixed the heading, because I had put Gardner Road in it.
The way wasn't anything they could've helped.
And I eliminated, oh, special, special, because it's not a special permit. It's, it's a, so, if you want to look at it too, just don't send it down to that end. Just don't mark it up, because those are the only two ones, and we're gonna sign one to keep it and give them one, because the closing's Monday to record.
That's all, we, we already received that, right? Didn't we see that all this?
Yeah, just added it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if we're ready to sign, we'll take a vote to approve it, and then we'll sign it. Does anyone make a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Okay, to approve the special, the, uh, the other thing we will permit restoration.
Restoration, yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Chris.
All in favor, Libdal, yes?
I, I.
Oh, oh, yeah, quick discussion, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Quick question, when is the, when is the transfer taking place, you say?
Monday.
Well, it's supposed to be tomorrow, but it won't be until Monday.
Okay, and all parties have agreed, I just want to state for the record, that all parties have agreed that the terms that are outlined here are acceptable, not only to the seller, but also to the buyer. You understand the full responsibilities that come along with this here?
Yes, I do.
You also understand that before you can do any kind of work there, you still have to come in front of the board and work with us on the matter of how the restoration has to proceed. This is not something that you can just go in by yourselves.
I understand.
Decide on how are you going to be doing the restoration. Quick question, are you planning, and, and again, this is just a, a question that potentially can change. Are you planning on using the same person or, or organization that was originally engaged with the Catestos?
She's got me all set up. Everything's good.
Okay.
There is coordination with the police and other things with traffic, and, I mean, you really need to involve the town unit.
I just want to make sure you understand, this is a big project.
I've been following this this whole time. I know every step of the way, so yes, sir.
All right, good. And finally, the extension, you feel that is considered to be reasonable for the timeline that you need in order to be able to extend?
Yep.
This is an exception that we're putting in place, and it means therefore that we are expecting you to be able to work.
Yeah, well, basically, like she said, it'd be done if COVID didn't hit.
I, I understand that, but I also understand that different, different organizations, such as potentially yours, has maybe different types of priorities for how you're going to be using the land, your financial resources, et cetera, as well as the context that you have.
Yeah, I understand.
I do not know, Madam Chair, given the fact that this has been already extended once, is there a possibility to further extend it if it were potentially at all necessary?
Hasn't been extended, with two years.
No, 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 once, once this extension goes through.
If you didn't get it done in the two years, I don't know, it depends on the cause. I mean, if COVID locks us down again, I think you'd be entitled.
Right.
We have to make this finding, that it was credible causes for delay.
Okay.
I should put that on my motion then, too. It was a credible delay.
Well, you can say as written.
As written, which is fine.
We'll put as written.
Which is what I did.
The state offices also closed, and we, Casella could not get in touch with state offices to get the permits that he needed.
Yep. This has a very high visibility, by the way, and I'm just stating this here because this would be the very first gravel pit that would be restored, and from our perspective.
Well, it's not a gravel pit, it's a clay pit.
What, clay pit, I'm sorry.
Our first restoration, which is a huge deal for us.
The point, the point I'm trying to make is, is there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of eyes on this here. We want to do this here correctly, we've, and, and the.
I clearly know this, I've been watching this, I'm aware.
The Catestos have been excellent working with us, and, and I just want to make sure that we can continue this relationship. Madam Chair, no more questions, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll sign.
Make sure it's in blue, please.
Oh, we need to take a vote, right?
Yeah, we gotta vote.
Oh, we haven't voted, that was discussion.
That's right.
Okay, so, ready to take a vote?
Yep.
I am.
Okay, Libdal, aye?
Steiger, aye.
Holman's aye.
Monroe, aye.
Okay.
You wanna start?
Make sure it's in blue ink, please.
Why don't we sign two and just send them down, two? Okay.
Thank you.
Send it with the pen. So, Alan, you grew up in town?
Yeah, yep. This'll be my thirty-seventh year here. There it is, my thirty-seventh year here.
When did it work, like?
October.
It's really nice to see it change hands with someone in town.
Yes.
Yeah, well, her land, it busts my mother's land, so it works out pretty good.
And you don't want to upset your mom?
No. So, it's pretty hard to do it, too, anyways, so. It's probably most easy to go in the first I know, beside her.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Just we're sending this back to you. And Eric, because, because it's not a special permit, it's a gravel remover permit, I don't think you can sign in place of. Actually, we have, in place of John, otherwise I'd let you, but I don't think you can.
That's not the role that she has.
Okay, so, we'll keep one. I'm gonna give here.
I know.
Can I take over to Mr. Cranston?
Different circumstantial, yes.
Oh, thank you, and good luck.
Good luck, thank you very much for coming and making this happen.
I'm happy it's finally working out for y'all.
You're kidding, you ain't kidding, this is six months of jumping through hoops.
Really.
With the mortgage comp, it's not, well, not with you, with the mortgage comp, oh my God.
Really?
Really, we started this last December.
Yeah.
No, you guys are in here a lot, trying to work this out, so good for you.
He was, yeah, she was.
Happy for you.
Thanks.
Being a homeowner's not easy.
I'm just giving up, I, I'm done.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everybody, thank you very much. Okay. So, our next order of business is an informal meeting, which we do encourage, so there's nothing really that he's presented to the board, except the documents we put in, regarding the country hen, and it's Bob Beauregard, who's here on that matter.
She can go first if she wants, I mean, I was here last, so.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
We.
Well, yeah.
Well, everybody gets to.
Actually, next door neighbors.
Yep.
She's at the church, but.
So, I, I just wanted, because Bob actually has been, he was before us first with the question, because he came back, not before us, but he talked to me months ago with these plans. And I'm a little bit head scratching, so I asked him, could he orient us with a?
So, I got copies for each.
Okay.
So, basically, what I'm looking for.
I downloaded mine, but that's all right.
I know the property really well.
Yeah, he mows it pretty much.
I, I mow it.
If you wanted, that's all right, I have an extra.
Plus, Jimmy grew up.
I have one more.
Okay.
Jimmy grew up in the house where the bathhouses is, and I used to work for his dad when I was on the front of that.
So, just to, just to start off a little bit, I, I was, I printed the accessor's map, right? This is the right parcel, right? So, it's Williamsville, you turn off from Gardner Road, and there's a little house, this is actually, this is north, right?
Yeah, the lot, oh, okay, yeah, the map here is backwards.
Yes, I've written upside down.
The way the road is, you do this way.
Yeah.
This is the first house on the left, as you pull down Williamsville, like little green one. The little, the little house with the one car in front of it.
Some coming on this way.
Yes.
And the church is almost across the street from it.
Which would be here.
Well, you got the little house across the street, and that, they used to go with the church.
Anyway, why don't you orient us a little bit better? Take us down Gardner Road from.
So, if, if you've got, if you're looking at this like this, and you go down Williamsville Road, three Williamsville is the little cottage house that's on the left-hand side.
Right next to the church?
Across the street from the church.
Across the church from the street, okay, okay. Oh, that's where I've been lost in this. Okay, got it.
And then, there's an entrance to the new facility that we built out back.
Okay.
And then, there's the big house that was the, where the proper, property originates, okay, from seven Williamsville. So, we have three, five, seven, and nine that we own all of.
So, three, three is lot one, five is lot two, seven is lot three, nine is lot four.
That's correct.
So, you come down Williamsville, and it's like this. I mean, you come down Gardner.
No, Williamsville Road, huh?
Williamsville Road.
Then you go on to Williamsville, and the church is here, because Gardner.
And then, there's the house on the right, right behind the church, and this is all across the street.
This is across from the church, not the house behind the church.
Yeah.
Okay.
The house behind the church is right across.
All right, I had this on the wrong side of the street, which is why this is backwards, folks, so don't.
Okay.
They don't, you don't have, they don't have this anyway, this was the.
Yeah, you're probably only showing the parcel. That's seven Williamsville, that entire parcel that you have right here.
The yellow.
I've got a big one right here that I can open up, that kinda shows the whole thing.
Yeah.
It was all put together.
Yeah, it's got the, in the corner there.
Yep, that's exactly what we have.
Yes, I had, okay, I was thinking this was on the other side. Okay, I got it, all right.
This, this wouldn't print like this printed. I don't know, I, I tried a hundred times, I couldn't get it to do it.
We, yeah, we appreciate it, but now I know where my mistake was, which is, so now I'm ready to go. So, there's a little house.
For years and years and years, three Williamsville, which is lot one, has been taxed separately. Got the, the, the tax bill right here. The, the whole point in this is what we're trying to do is we're trying to split this up so that we can sell off lot one and lot three, because we really don't need it for the farm. Basically, it's just sitting there, and it's costing me a lot of money to maintain it and whatever, whatever else we have to do. There would, it would be necessary to have an easement between.
Lot one and three?
No, between lot three and lot four, because there's a septic system that goes up through there. What I'm trying to do, and what, what I'm looking for, is a verbal approval, so we can draw up the maps, so that I can separate this. I realize it doesn't have the frontage, I realize it doesn't have the acreage, but that's the way that it's been for so many years. We basically, when we bought all the property, shot ourselves in the foot.
Yeah, because once you buy it, you're supposed to combine it. This, I mean, it's not supposed to redivide it, but this is two hundred feet frontage, and this has two hundred.
Yes, it does.
So.
And so does the entrance have two hundred feet.
And these both have eighty thousand square feet.
That one's just under, you see, it's one point eight three.
Because they created one large chip when they put them together.
Yeah, they don't have the acreage.
Is it eighty thousand square feet, or is it two acres?
It's two acres.
You have to have two acres with two hundred feet of frontage.
Okay.
Is it either or?
No, it's both.
They're both.
They create, back in the sixties, there was no zoning in Hubbardston, and a company came and started building up these small campground lots off in Pinecrash, where I used to live, and the town started the first zoning back in the sixties. Because of that, it was a hundred feet and then an acre, and then over the years, they upped it to two hundred feet and two acres for every building lot.
Is there a house on, there's a house on this ha- acre, the little one?
There's a little house on that.
Okay, and what about the other two? Does lot three have a house?
There's a house in the middle lot.
Lot three has the big farmhouse on it.
Okay.
What's, what's on lot five, I'm sorry, lot, lot two, which is number five, that's just.
Lot two is the new buildings that we built out back, behind the, behind number seven.
And that's the driveway going up to the barns out here.
I, I see now, okay.
And these are just gradient lines.
Yeah, if you look at the big map here, you can see the buildings on the map.
The little houses here.
Got it.
That's the bathhouse, and they do want to go with the property here, and that's the, the mansion house they want to sell.
And then, lot four is vacant, or?
Lot four has a, we, we tore down a house, and we built the shower house. Basically, it's a shower house for all the employees.
So, it continues to be used by your facility for production?
Right, and we would keep that. We need that for the farm, it's part of our buyer's security plan.
Yeah, you have to help out.
So, why if, if, and this is owned by the firm, too, right?
Yes.
So, I don't speak for the board, I just speak for me, but if you have, we, in order for us to do an A and R plan, we have no authority to make undersized lots once at all, we just don't have it, to create undersized lots. You'd have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and get a variance based on some factor, right? But my suggestion, I don't know, my suggestion would be, if you're gonna keep this lot anyway as a shower house, why not resize this one to get your two acres in? I mean, you, you're not gonna sell it anyway, right?
Resize what?
Lot, lot four, make it's.
Resize, lot, lot four.
Lot three.
I don't see any way you can get two hundred feet of frontage on that lot.
Which is the shower house that you want to keep us on.
I don't see anybody to do that.
Lot one.
The little house.
No, there's no way to get two hundred feet of frontage. And what's, that's why I'm saying it already exists, it's been like that for.
Yeah, but once, once they bought it, they can mine it into one deed.
Yep.
All bets are off.
Question, what, what is the frontage on lot one right now? Do you know?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I have, which one's lot one?
I'm looking at it back.
That's a small one here. Lot four.
I'm reading, oh, lot one, I was reading number three.
So, that story right there.
Yeah, that's, that's three Williamsville Road five.
So, it'd be three, yeah, 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 I was gonna do.
That one's lot one right there?
Yeah, that one's a lot wrong.
I think I tried to look that up, and it said zero or something.
So, I was trying to figure out a way you guys could do this. How many, how many feet of frontage on the access road?
Two hundred.
And that's required, because?
But wait a minute, all right, wait a minute, let me look at this for a second.
He has a second plan, too, which we should do.
Hold on, because back.
I didn't bring that with me.
Many years ago, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mike Capuccio came up with an idea for Parsons Lane, where they swapped property lines, and it worked out. Because, and you might be, let me look at it for a second.
May I ask, behind lot one?
You can't do that either.
What is there?
It's the fishing wildlife area.
Conservation land.
Oh, this is all.
What about this?
Yeah.
What about this?
The hash lines is all, so he really is.
How many feet of frontage do we have in the little lot?
That's what we're trying to find out.
I'm trying to get it from the accessor's map, but.
What if we take a portion of this?
Is it on this, or what, you can say on this, right?
No.
Oh, here we go.
No, that won't work.
There's the scale, so that is twenty meters.
You're working against the doctrine that if you buy two lots, the lot, non-conforming lots that stand alone and every butter is separate, owned in separate title, then you keep your non-conforming status. But once you buy the lot next door, you can't redivide it along the.
Right, well, it was all sold in one piece.
And you can't.
I understand.
Yep.
And you can't, I was just trying to think of how to do this, but we can't make these.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nonconforming lots that have two hundred feet of frontage. I can't steal frontage off any one of those three.
No, because you have the minimum, you have the minimum on each one of them.
He says, Mallory says a hundred and eighty-six feet, so that's not too far.
All right, what if we do this? It only needs twenty-four feet.
Fifteen more feet, not even.
All right, what, what, what if we do this?
Fourteen and a half.
You could.
Can we?
It only need fourteen feet, wouldn't it be better to just go to the zoning board and get a variance? Ask them to get a variance for that?
You probably are better on.
And then, you can come back here, and actually, this is what the, the ZBA would do anyways. My thoughts is, if you can't get a variance for that, what if you attach this property to this one with a right-of-way? You got your two hundred feet of frontage here for that.
It looks like the other parcels all have two feet, right?
And then, you could steal fourteen feet from here and just have a right-of-way coming out, or.
The prob, the only.
And that way, then, you don't need two hundred feet on, on that lot.
The only concern, however, is this lot three is non-conforming by itself, because it doesn't have the acreage.
So, if you add this two hundred feet of frontage, how much of the access road do you have to give the other lot for?
No, I'm, what I'm saying is, is that.
It doesn't have two hundred feet and two acres.
May I ask a clarifying question? Are you trying to sell lot one and lot three?
Yes.
Separately?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the problem.
Right, right.
That's the problem.
So, would they be sold together?
The, the, I'm, I'm, I, I don't, I don't know the specifics on this here. So, the problem here is, is lot three is non-conforming by acreage. Lot one is non-conforming by acreage and by the extent of the, of frontage. I think the idea that Bill has proposed, which is certainly something you can explore, which is basically, see if you can find a way to, to combine lot two, which you're keeping in lot four, would then allow you, because then you would have frontage, you've had two frontages, and you could give part of the frontage to lot one, potentially. I'm not saying that that, it's something to explore, is what I'm saying. The problem, however, is, is that it even further decreases your acreage on lot three. Because all you need to do is, is you need to, you need to interconnect lot four, lot two, and lot four.
Right, well.
Right? So, by combining, by combining these two.
If you look at this.
This and this here, right?
What we thought we could do is, we could put, in order to make the acreage for this, we could put a sliver of land all the way down along this edge, all, it comes all the way up to here. And it's a sliver, to get the acreage.
Technically, there's nothing that prevents you from doing so. The, the question then would be is, is, do you have enough of a sliver to also give you the, the frontage? See, the problem is, is you have, you have two hundred feet here.
So, if we, we can't take two, fourteen feet from this one and put it on this one?
The only way to.
We can, but you don't have the acreage for the whole lot.
Yeah, no, but, no, no, hold on, I think, I think there's something to be, there's something to be done here. You have, you have this and this, if, if I may, sorry.
Let's stand.
If you can combine this with a sliver of land, now you have this interconnected between what is, what is in orange and what is in green.
Yep.
Right, is now interconnected, and you can make this, join these two together, lot, lot two and, and lot, lot four would be interconnected. And then, and, I'm sorry?
It'd be one lot.
Exactly, it would be one lot.
If I borrow one, then I'll pencil.
You can get a pencil, and then you can erase it, how's that?
By, by the virtue, by virtue of the fact that you have one lot now, now you have sufficient.
Two hundred feet of frontage here.
You have, you still, you still keep your frontage here, and as a matter of fact, what you're doing is, is you have frontage here, you have two hundred feet of frontage here, you have two hundred feet of frontage here.
Wow.
You can then potentially give a fort, and again, it, you have to dis, look at the, somewhat, you can design this here with you. You could grant fourteen and a half feet, or whatever number, well, it's actually, whatever number of feet is, to this lot, which at least gives you the frontage. You still don't have the acreage, except for the fact that if you, to your point, you, you do provide this here.
This is what that looks like, though.
Yeah.
What if you came down?
It's really crazy.
That's what we were thinking.
Look at the green, I mean, it's really crazy.
To make, to make this two acres, this is what we were thinking.
But I'm sugge, what we are suggesting is, is, what we are suggesting to you is, is that in addition to this here, to this piece, this piece of land, what you'd actually do is, is you grant this, you, you basically combine these two.
Right.
Now, the, and the only question and the only concern would be is, is that you still, yes, you have two, you have two hundred feet here.
And two acres.
But you have, no, you don't have two acres, you have one point eight three acres. But you have, no, you don't have two acres, you have one point eight three acres, and that's where you will have to go to the zoning board of appeals on this one here. Because you're just under that. I think you have a better chance, however.
Also, do this.
Did you?
You could take your property line and go this way with it, and put it over here, the same thing. And the other thing I was thinking of too, is, which I've done before in the ZBA, been on that board for many, many years. Give the frontage here all the way across, because it doesn't matter, you don't need it, you have it over here.
Yep.
So the two hundred feet here, doesn't matter, come down here and get whatever you need for your total two acres, and then have a legal right-of-way to your property.
You could do that too, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think there's place, there's, there's ways to, there's ways in which you can work with a.
Wait, I need to ask what Bill just said, where, so how does he get the two hundred acres for a lot two?
The two hundred feet?
He can get whatever he needs, we don't need two hundred feet here, a legal right-of-way where his access road is.
Yeah, but I think that's the frontage for that lot.
He doesn't need it if he kind of combines it with this lot.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If he comes over here somehow and attaches, which is no big deal.
Yeah.
So this all, butts all the way down.
Bill, Bill, that's smart, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, what you do is you give that two hundred feet to here with a legal right-of-way to the property. Or, what you could do is get rid of all of this and put the road over here to the back here.
Yeah.
That's another way.
That's another venture, yeah.
But it's another option.
Yeah.
But if you combine it here, do you, don't, doesn't your frontage, there are some rules about that, do, does your access have to be through your frontage? I don't know the answer to that, you know what I mean? Does your access have to be through your frontage?
But his access would be here on a right-of-way. Which is legally a lot, and, and what you're saying, I don't know.
Somebody else's frontage, the frontage to his lot is here. I, I just don't know the answer to that question, but I know there are some rules on.
Okay.
If your frontage, that your access has to be through your frontage, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't know. You know what you need to do is.
But again, if you combine the two together, you actually have four hundred feet of frontage on, on this new lot. So what you would do is, is you take lot one, lot two, and lot, you take lot two, lot four, you would combi- you would combine it. And just by virtue of the fact that you would, you would create a smaller access, now you have four hundred feet of frontage, right?
And you could still do your sliver on the side.
And you can still do your sliver on the side.
And that's another option.
Yeah. That's probably the best option and easiest, sell those separately.
Right, right.
And then just go to zoning for this.
E- exactly.
Correct.
And what are we looking at?
You have a big enough lot over here.
Point, yeah, it'd be point one seven that was short, right?
Well, you, you, you'll have to, you'll have to work with somebody who's a draftsman and, and, and a, and a land surveyor and, and work it out with them.
Who, who created, did you create lot two with a surveyor on your road? Who did those plans?
All, all of this is, was done, because we bought the whole property, bought it legally.
Sure, sure.
But, but, but done by whom? I would go back.
This was all done, but, well, I, I had him in my office this morning, it was all done by New England Environmental Design.
Do they have, do they have a good surveying team?
Surveying, all that.
But they, but they should know the A and R rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I.
Which we can't.
The reason that I wanted to come in was to try to get some ideas as to what we could do.
Save some money, you don't want to spend the money.
I don't want to spend the money to draw this all out and have it all surveyed to find out that we can't do it, you know?
But they, but, but, but the experts may be better at answering your questions.
So, so, so the, the issue that you're confronted is, is you have at least two non-conforming lots. And the non-conforming on one of them is dual, acreage, frontage. On the other one, it's, uh, acreage. So, I think that you, you just need to play around with, you, I don't want to say play, you have to calculate how to do the division, you own everything. The question is, is how do you now divvy this up so that by the end, each one of them becomes as conforming as possible? And if not, in my opinion, minimize the amount of interfaces you have to do with the ZBA. So if you go there for one lot only, versus going there for two. Because your chances of having rejection for two is higher than for one, okay? I mean, this is just a matter of risk and reward.
Yeah.
And you have to determine how that works best.
This line when you bought it existed though, right? Was lot two a separate lot when you bought it, or did you put it in?
No.
All was together.
All of it was together.
The previous owner bought that whole.
Lot one, lot two, and lot three is, was all one piece of property. Lot four was owned by somebody else that we purchased after that fact.
Okay, that was.
The folks living in the old big house ended up buying all that property up, and they bought the last town, house right next door and they're living in that.
Right. Well, Larry passed away.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Almost two years ago.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of, you, you have to be also very cognizant of the fact that there's a lot of square footage that you have to make up. So whatever that sliver is, has to, has to accommodate that.
I don't see this doing, I don't see doing this. I think that's crazy. But maybe that's just me. I think the planning board might.
See if they can draw it up.
Might do this one, because this one, there is an existing house.
That wasn't original parcel all by itself.
And it wasn't original parcel, and it's completely boxed in by, uh, uh, DCR land, right?
All around it.
So the only thing they've done with it is they've taken a little corner out of it, right? Or did that line, did this?
We put an access road in between the, the properties.
Yeah.
And we did that legally by putting the two hundred feet there.
Right.
Yes.
It's a beautiful access too.
Yeah.
They might give you this one, but I can't speak for another board, but I do, I am sympathetic, because this, this one, the house exists, he's not trying to divide it up like it is on this side.
Yep.
Right.
Um, and. It does have nearly enough feet, right, and they, this is a huge use for us, and he's, and it's e- unique, it's boxed in.
I think the biggest issue with this whole thing is, I think the frontage is doable on a variance. I don't think the square footage is on a variance, that's, that would be the issue, I think.
But this one, what do you think, where it doesn't have any place else to go, you think the zoning board would?
I don't know if we've ever done that before.
Because it's the uniqueness of the parcel, right?
Take into consideration that everything that the country end does for the town of Hubbardston too.
Well, the other thing the board looks at, well, the other thing the board looks at is they don't want to set precedent.
Yeah, no, I understand, I do, I was just kidding.
Right, right, but I'm saying, that, and that's one, that's one of the biggest rules that we try to do on.
Don't get me wrong, goodwill is important, because that's why, that's why it's important for us to work with you and trying to come up with a solution.
Right.
But we also, I have to state this here publicly, from our perspective, we also, as Bill said, we cannot set precedent, we cannot set precedent for anybody else.
So we gotta be careful.
Yep. So from our perspective, we, we are happy to work with you and trying to come up with what is a fair solution, a legal solution. That does not put the town into a, an issue with precedent.
Right.
That is our concern here.
But the other.
I appreciate the ideas, I, I do.
I would, I don't, I don't, I don't know if this is, uh, something you may want to do, I, I know there are. There are people in town that have worked on issues such as this here. And you may want to approach them and ask them if they have some thoughts, or can direct you to the right individuals or people. Who can help you if they themselves are not able to. Cannot tell you who specifically, but I think you can.
We do have a consultant too, and we could run this by Bill, the problem is that we pay Bill for his time.
Yeah, my, my point exactly, this is where, where I was going, you may want to.
Your guys probably would have good understanding of this.
Yeah, I'm sure he does.
Yeah.
I'm sure he does.
So talking with those right people, they might, and you present this to them, I think that in less than five minutes, they can say, you got option A, B, or C. If you want to approach this here, I will work with you, or you can go to this other individual who can help you out. Again, we're not here to tell you who to go to.
And ask specifically the issue, which I don't know off the top of my head, we're all laypeople, whether the excess has to be from the frontage.
Yes.
There are case law.
Is there any way you could look into that?
Um, I can?
Well, I mean, if there's, if we took fourteen feet of that frontage from, from one to put it to the other one, to give it there, we still have.
You don't have to.
We still have three hundred and, what, seventy-something feet of frontage.
You still, that's what I was.
Why does the, why does the access point have to, I mean, if it's from the frontage, really, why would it change?
That could be another variance to look at too, that aspect, because you're still connecting to the other lot, so you've got plenty of land. And you've got plenty of frontage over there, so it's different ways to looking at it.
I, I, I can ask Bill that question.
Okay.
Bill Murray, our consultant, I'll call you back.
You do have some advantages here, and that is, is you already have two hundred feet of frontage for a facility, you're not going to give up.
Right.
You have two hundred feet of frontage, so you have a total four hundred feet if those two lots were to be combined.
Right.
And I think that, that is kind of like, that, that's the ace in your pocket, that you can look into. And see whether or not there's something that is doable there, again, we cannot guide you there, but I think it's certainly something for you to look into.
I understand.
And if this, this one has a house on it though now, right?
Lot.
The lot four has a house on it?
Facility that they.
Has a facility.
But not a house.
Not a house.
Not a dwelling.
Basically a bathhouse, with toilets and showers. Yep. And it's got the hu- a big septic system attached to it.
Right.
If you could use that frontage, because you've combined them, I just don't know whether you could do it.
From, from lot two, to go to the, to these, to this lot four bathhouse.
From lot.
They come up here and go around, or they go through the property?
Right, they walk right through the back, you know?
And then they drive through here and they.
The more reason that if you are thinking that in the future you will continue to use this here as a bathhouse. And you will have these barns here, you may want to think about making sure that there is a form of an access way between the two.
Right.
Be very expensive.
Down in that corner.
That'd be expensive.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to.
Well, I mean, it just only needs to be a walking path, it doesn't have to be.
I don't think you really legally have to show, do that, because you've got access to the road from here.
Right.
And that's what they do now. They drive from that, these buildings, they come up, in the summertime, they walk if it's nice out, but if it's inclement weather, they go around, and then they, there's a parking lot right here.
Yeah.
But it would have to be. It would have to be part of that lot, right, if they don't have frontage, pre-standing frontage of its own, it would have to be combined.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it's a doable idea, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will, I'll get back to you on the access issue.
Okay.
Other than that, I do think you need to talk to somebody who's really into subdivision details, but our planning board powers are very limited. A and R lots must conform, and that's how you'd be presenting this, so we don't have the power to do what you're saying.
Otherwise, it's not an A and R.
I completely understand.
So I don't know whether we've helped, but remind me to call Bill.
Yeah.
Maybe some exceptions, or, I know there's case law on it, I just don't know how the case law came out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'll get him to try to redraw this back up again.
Yeah, come back.
And then I'll come back.
Come back with him.
Yeah, come back with the person.
And we'll put you on first, so you're not paying too much time for somebody to sit there.
Yeah.
Yep.
That, that'd probably be the cheapest way to go.
You know Julian?
I know Julian.
Yeah.
I know the name.
Clever, we need a clever person.
Well, I don't want to say he's not clever, I'm being recorded, I don't know.
And we've worked with quite a few surveyors, but they should be able to do it, some, people that are used to subdivision issues.
I think a lot of times you put the ideas out there, you get the wheels going, a lot of people come up with great ideas, so.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
I wouldn't say okay, but it's better than having you spend a lot of money and going in the wrong direction, so.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, third person, also an informal meeting, also interesting.
Next door neighborhood of on.
Is Mary Bellard, that's right. But this, but what she's coming about doesn't involve the church.
No, it doesn't.
No.
So it involves.
Seven acre lot.
Yeah.
Which.
Road, Maple Lane.
Which you can, yeah, come up and join us at the table. So I put, I did a little research on this so you guys could see it, so I hope you looked at your documents.
Some papers too.
So this is, yeah, that's the lot, that's the same one I have here, right? But there was also the subdivision that was done. Is there, what, what else is in that besides?
Um, the subdivision and just a couple of maps, yeah.
So you're, you.
I'll take yours, we're all looking at the same thing. The covenant and the paperwork that was attached to for, from his original. And then I, I blew up the, um, it was impossible to read the.
Those are words you shouldn't use in public anymore. Blew it up?
Yeah, I could.
I know, I blew it up, I, that's not a good word, I guess. But this one, one of the original plan that he, development that he had submitted was hard to read, really.
Who was that?
Um, it was Chris Begley.
Who still owns this lot?
He does.
Okay.
So my issue is that my husband and I are considering purchasing the land. But, um, we want to be sure that we can build on it and do some things with it that we'd like to do. Um, before we go ahead and make an offer, um, we need to kind of have an idea of what we might have to put into the property for finances and.
So thi- this, this one you have copies of too?
Yeah.
Where is it?
No, the total lot area is almost eighty acres, seventy-nine, plus, right? And the frontage, it looks like goes down the front of lot one.
Yeah, here's the, look at this, look at the subdivision, one though, that's important. So, this Maple Lane, if you look at this, this is actually Joe Corna, how do you spell his name?
Shoneer.
Cornier's lot.
Shoneer.
Shoneer. So his, his frontage is on Williamsville, right? So this road doesn't, isn't an accepted road in the town of.
It hasn't been done yet.
So.
It was never finished.
It was never finished, right? And, well, it means, it was never accepted. So if you look at, and then you look at this lot, you can see, uh, Mary and the board, that all, the, um. What the guy, the guy that knows.
Chris Begley.
Chris Begley did was, he sold the lot, this lot.
One forty-seven?
One forty, yeah, one forty-seven is a group home. So he sold it to the group home, and I don't know how he did that without really putting in the road, but they must have given him exception or something. Do we know the history of that? I don't know, because in theory, you, you can't sell lots in a subdivision until you, right? But his frontage is, he was going to be on this cul-de-sac, which he didn't build.
Right.
So my issue with Mary was, because I taught, we talked about this, and then I thought I shouldn't just opine, I need to talk to you guys.
Right.
Is that she would have to put in, because if you buy it, you, you step into the shoes of the guy who owns it. So now it's your obligation to build a cul-de-sac, right? So if you build this road, first of all, it's pretty expensive, even a minor road, to put it in up to standard, right? And then if you put a cul-de-sac in the end, that would give her the frontage, right? Which is, I don't, I can't read this plan, but I assume that.
I blew it up, because it's, um.
Can you, can you see what the frontage on the cul-de-sac is?
Two seventy-six something.
That would be the blow up.
Oh, okay.
I think, I am reading two hundred and seventy-six right here.
Okay, two hundred and.
Again, it's two hundred and sixty-three here.
Two hundred and seventy, okay, so she would have here, frontage, her frontage would be the cul-de-sac, right?
My question is, how did the group home get frontage, there is none.
The group home's frontage is the other side of the cul-de-sac, but he never put in the cul-de-sac.
Frontage, they couldn't, they couldn't put the building up without.
I don't know how he got a permit.
When did this, uh, when did, when was this built? This.
It was back in eighty, this proposal was back in what, eighty-nine or something like that?
The plan is, yeah, dated nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine.
I don't know.
Eighty-nine.
So one forty-seven was built in eighty-nine?
What's the number of the home? The group home? The group home in Seven Hills, um.
Yeah, Seven Hills, it, I know it was built, well, the plan is eighty-nine, subdivision plan was eighty-nine. So for some reason, they let him use a right-of-way, maybe because they said, well, as long as it's just one property there. Or maybe there was a house there they tore down, or a pre-existing structure or something, but this is a subdivision plan.
Yeah, he divided it, yeah.
So you need to put in, I mean, and I don't know, the frontage now we require, you have the two, your frontage becomes this cul-de-sac. It isn't here on the road, it's the front, it's the cul-de-sac, right?
Does anybody own one oh three, one forty-six?
One forty-six is owned by Joseph Shoneer.
Yeah, there's a house there.
And this prop, but this property was part of the subdivision, correct?
Do you remember Christina?
Yes, that, the back of one.
Yes, so nobody owns this, it's still part of your land, right? It was, it was part of the subdivision, but it's part of what they own. This is also difficult.
If you look at the yellow one, you'll see it's, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the yellow one, so this, so Bill, this isn't separated out, this is still part of it. The subdivision. It isn't under separate ownership, it's part of the yellow parcel.
I'm sorry, but still, what's, what's in front of it on Williamsville Road?
There's only one, look at the white, look at the yellow thing.
Yeah.
The only lot here on Williamsville is, say his name again for me, I could bet it's French.
Joe, Joseph Schonier.
Joe. Joe Schonier, he's the only lot, and his frontage is on Williamsville.
On one forty-seven?
No, one forty, one seventy-four is the group home.
There was one seven.
And then the parcel that's one forty-six is Joe's.
This one, this is the group home, this little sliver.
Right.
And this is Joe's. So this parcel has no frontage, unless she builds a subdivision.
Right, but you're saying this is a group home on one forty-seven, correct?
I mean, the.
How do they get their frontage for that lot?
I'm trying to find anything in the registry.
Oh, I know.
Their frontage, Bill.
They have different numbers on them.
Their frontage has to have been this cul-de-sac.
So the cul-de-sac's already approved then?
It's been approved, this is approved, but it was never built.
This one's the other one. With the other numbers.
The group home was never built?
No, the group home was built, but the cul-de-sac was never installed.
But, so what you have there, I, I was, I drove there the other day, uh, so I end up coming up here. And what, this is, this is not a cul-de-sac, this is just an open area.
No, it's the dash line, that's what it is. They let him put a driveway instead of the cul-de-sac then.
Correct, correct, so you do not have a cul-de-sac, what you have is, is basically a drive where you come up there, you see a house, and you say, oh, this must belong to these people who live there. But there is no cul-de-sac there.
Right. But if you see with the subdivision plan, there was supposed to be this cul-de-sac put in, and the group home would have frontage on the cul-de-sac, and then the remaining backland would have frontage, right?
So they made this their driveway for the group home?
Yeah.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt here, but there is, there is a, there is pavement on Maple Lane up to certain, some, not many feet, because where Joseph lives, uh, he actually has his entrance going up Maple Lane.
Okay.
Yes, his frontage, and he is quote-unquote a Williamsville resident, road resident.
Right, right.
But, but in order to get into his house, you actually have to go up that small little maple, maple lane.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
His driveway is off.
And then that, that's where his driveway quote-unquote is.
But Maple Lane is not listed on the approved road list, so it's another north Comet Pond.
So they allowed an illegal road, technically, or they, they allowed.
I guess he was supposed to finish it, but he just never did.
But they did not.
They allowed houses to be built on a road that wasn't a town-approved road.
So here's, here's my question for the group is, if you assume that Maple Lane exists to where they, the cross is, right? And we have this rule that a dead-end road can't be more than five hundred feet, right? So is it five hundred feet from where the paved part of Maple Road ends, or is it, which would at least give her, then she could, in theory, put a second cul-de-sac or do something? Or would the five hundred feet be all the way from Williamsville, in which case she would never be able to do anything but put the cul-de-sac in?
Right, 'cause it's, if you go all the way to Williamsville, it's four hundred and something feet. But if you go from the pavement, it's probably less. Actually, what we'd like to do is go into the property further with the road if we were to actually pay for a road to go in, so that we could split the property, um, at some point.
Right.
Because obviously, my husband and I just, I just retired, he's been retired from the city for a while, and we're moving out here. And, but we certainly don't need seventy-nine acres, but we love the property.
Yeah.
And we want to be able to use some of the property for.
Let me out, I'm stuck in your pocket.
I'm sorry. I just shut all that out.
Yeah. Is that the kids', grandkids?
When I first got this phone, everybody had the same phone, the same notifications and ring. So I put, um, the theme to Halloween show, and then I put, my kids heard that notification.
Oh, that's so funny, that's funny.
So, may I ask for a clarifying, so this lot here, which is all of this here?
All owns by Joe, Joe owns it all.
This is owned by Joe. And so the question would be, is, is where, I mean, if, first of all, the first question I have is, is, I know that there, this is paved here, I don't know as to whether or not this is considered to be, if Maple Lane is considered to be a, a town road, if you say it's not.
It's not, it's not on the list of chapter ninety roads.
If it's not, if, if it's not, then the, the next question would be, is, is it considered to be, is it considered to be a private road right now, or what is it?
That's what I would say, if it's not a full-town road.
This is where, uh, we all, you know, this is in that, this is that issue, which comes up again and again and again. So if it's not an accepted road, I guess it would be.
It's a private road.
Well, private roads get accepted too, it's a recognized road, but, um, it would, you know, you'd have to go through that same road. Was it in existence prior to subdivision? You have to go through that analysis.
So, so, so my que, my, my question really stems from the fact that I see this line here, is this, is this their lot for, for one forty-seven?
Their, no, um, yes, this is the group home's foundation.
Yes, but I, my, my question is, is where, where does, where does their property in theory, in, in reality?
This is their lot, and he's got a right-of-way to finish the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so the cul, so, so, so this, this is their boundary of their lot here.
Correct, the right is the boundary of their lot, subject to the right-of-way.
And so it'd be easier to look out on this for you?
Oh, it is, okay, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
It is this here.
Right, you're right.
So for all intents and purposes, for all intents and purposes, this is where their lot finishes and then goes around, right?
That's their frontage.
Why can't the other lot do that?
So the question would be, is, is, is what do we do here? In theory, then the question would be, is, is how can we make sure that whatever you build there? So the quandary here is, is you, you do not have road frontage.
Right.
Right.
And so I think the very first thing that has to be ma, happen here is, is potentially, the group home, yourselves, and maybe Joe, have to figure out a way to make this, uh, a road, public road.
Which is really expensive, 'cause you gotta bring it up to chapter ninety code, right?
Or, the other question would be, is, is keep it as a private road, and then the question would be, is, is can, can we, can it be introduced as a private road? Can we make that investigation as to whether or not it could be considered to be a private road, like the Comet Pond roads that we have?
The difference with the Comet Pond road was that we weren't looking to extend the road, right?
And, and, and we're not extending it either, this is in existence already.
I think, I think the difference between what you're talking about here is the fact those were done way before zoning.
Yes, this is, this is a subdivision. I mean, I, I don't have the answer, but I do think that we've had other private roads, and we've had arguments with them. And there is, there is a way with A and R plans, if the road existed way back before subdivision, before fifty-nine, people, and there's a finding that it's of adequate, uh, construction, and for fire access and everything else.
It's turned around for biotrocs and so forth.
That you could, you, that it could be considered a road. But I don't think it's come before us where somebody then wants to add on to the end of that road. It comes before us with, you have a big lot, and you wanna divide it on that road, or a house burns down, you want a building permit to rebuild it. So I'm, I mean, my opinion is that you'd have to put in the cul-de-sac in order to do anything with that house. And then it's very limited because, because of our five hundred-foot dead-end road.
If they make it into a cul-de-sac, and it's not a dead-end road.
Yes, but it's only allowed to be five hundred feet long. No, a cul-de-sac, even a loop road isn't allowed under our zoning bylaws. So if she were to run a road in and loop it around and come back?
Well, I'm saying a cul-de-sac, that's, we have it in other places in town.
But, but look, if you look at our subdivision rules, it says no, a, a cul-de-sac is considered a dead-end road. It's just a dead-end road with a turnaround.
So all the ones that were done before, they got accepted and are okay?
Well, it doesn't exist, though. Oh, oh, I mean, if there was a dead-end road before, I don't know the answer to that, whether you could put.
The dark ones have cul-de-sacs.
There, yeah, the cul-de-sacs must, that are longer than that, the roads, if the road exists and you put a cul-de-sac off it.
Yeah.
Then it's only the length of, you can go five hundred feet in with the cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay.
So the question is, from here, do you consider this road having existed, so she gets five hundred feet from here?
Okay.
Which would allow her to go in a little further, maybe to bring the road up a little further and put a cul-de-sac in, which might give you two or three house lots, be a big difference, actually.
Yeah, that's kind of, in, in the future, that's probably what we would like to do, I mean, it wouldn't be something immediate, because right now, our goal would be to set up a, a little house for my husband and I and, and get settled.
But Mary, you'd have to put in the, the cul-de-sac anyway, though.
Right, right, but what I wanted to know is about, like, um, and everyone says it's expensive, and I understand that, um, but are we talking twenty thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, like, because I haven't made an offer. We did make an offer, he counter-offered, um, we haven't gone back to him yet, because I don't know what kind of money we're talking about that I would need to invest, and that would make a difference on what we offer, obviously. So that's what I was kind of trying to get, and, and I know you can't say, yeah, this is what it's gonna cost, but if I can get a ballgame or, or a general idea of what, um, you're talking about per feet for a road, um, I know in the city, you know, we just had a little piece of property next to us that we just sold, and it needed to have an extension for the street. And so we were able to tell them, it's this amount per feet that it's gonna cost to put this road in. So I don't know if you have that kind of, we, we don't.
We do not have that information.
But you could take this plan to a paver person and say, you know, the whole, it's, so this shows two things, it shows the right-of-way, which is wider, and then the amount that needs to be paved. And the amount that needs to be paved, well, it's a minor road, we, take your blow-up and they can see it. And it would have to be built, because I think your grandfathered with the plan. So I think that even if, um, the frontage was increased, or the road width was, that this would govern, I think. And at least it would do for estimate purposes, but it's gonna be expensive, 'cause a cul-de-sac is big, it's a whole turnaround.
And it, it can't be gravelled, it doesn't have to be paved?
It has to be paved.
But again, like, what kind of cost are you thinking, like, do you have any idea?
This is, this is not our department of understanding, I apologize, but it's, it's not something we have.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just know that's what, that's a, that's the requirement, though. If he had made the cul-de-sac from the beginning and made it official.
As it was supposed to be.
Right, then it would've been a different story.
It appears, I mean, this, I, I see these maps here, they're from nineteen eighty-nine.
Right.
Right? So that's, uh, thirty-two years ago.
Our issue is that, you know, my, my bank, we, we're already pre-approved for a land loan, however, they need something from the town that says it's build of the lot, obviously, um, or they're, we're not gonna be able to get a land loan. So we can't make an offer and, and go back and forth with him unless we know
Right.
def- definitively that we're gonna be able to build, um, a property.
I would definitely go to somebody, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill.
I would just go to somebody and have them give you, uh, an estimate, so you, you have an idea what kind of money. Uh, then go back and make a counter offer, because he never did that nineteen eighty-nine.
So the other question, the other question you may raise is with the people who live on lot one seventy, one forty-seven, I think it is, we were saying earlier?
Group home?
Yes, lot one forty-seven.
The group home? One forty-seven, has to their, their interest in making this the right way. And see whether or not they are also interested in.
Oh, there you go, that's an idea.
And, and, and working jointly with you and, and putting a proper cul-de-sac in here. That means that you could potentially share the cost, which I think makes a lot more sense, because it's not something that would only benefit you, but would benefit them.
And also the, the first housing on the left, will they have the driveway after that?
No, that, they're, they're, Joe is, Joe's property is probably, yeah, he's totally unaffected by that.
Joe owns this.
But I think the people who live in the group home are the right people for you to potentially approach. And that's absolutely your choice as to whether or not you want to do that or not. And see whether or not they are interested in working with you on coming up with some form of a, an agreement. And I would certainly do that before you, you know, before you make any kind of final decision regarding the purchase or not, I mean, that's your choice, but.
Now, to actually finish the cul-de-sac there, would that then make it a legal street?
No, that, there's still other processes that you would have to follow in order to make that a, a, a town, legal town road slash street.
But you, you come and have it accepted, and if it's built up to code, which this requires, the town would accept it, I think they have to if it's up to code, right?
Yes. If it is up to code, I believe that at that point in time, and doesn't it have to be voted, though?
Yes, we voted at a town meeting.
It has to be voted at a town meeting, and the next town meeting is not until.
Next June.
To, no, there's, there's, there's October, November, and then there's another one in the, in the, uh, late spring, in the June timeframe.
Oh, it's over.
No, one always on the phone. I do think what happened.
That's what happened with Streeter Road. Streeter Road was considered a private road, and they went back and forth, and they finally had it accepted. This is a very small road in, I mean, comparison to Streeter Road, Streeter Road was much, much larger.
But that was a fight too, you're gonna have, if you bring it up to standard, they'll accept it, but they're not gonna accept it the way it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think the reason this was, I don't know why the exception was made, but I think the reason was because there was only one property that was gonna be there, so they allowed him to get away with a driveway. But they said if you wanna subdivide it, you gotta put in the cul-de-sac, that's my guess. You can also talk to the, um, building inspector. But, um, so, we're usually fighting with him.
But this would still only give us, um.
One lot.
One lot. It wouldn't be, allow us, is there any, um, potential that you can see that might be able to?
Not, not this way.
You know, go in.
What would really be is if you, if any of these lots came for sale, so you could get frontage on the other side?
We'll make the cul-de-sac big enough, so you have two hundred feet of frontage for the, the back half of your lot and the front half of the lot. You have to make that cul-de-sac big.
Or you could put a road through, if they bought, could buy one of these lots.
Yeah, so, so lots, lots forty, you know, lots thirty-nine, lots, I don't know what the frontage is in forty-eight or forty-one or any of those lots, those are lots that.
You have to have some sort of, gotta have frontage on a town road, total of two hundred feet and two acres of land.
Right. But if you, but even if you.
Just like what Bob was talking about.
But if you could buy one of those lots that just had less than the frontage, you'd at least, it was at least wide enough for a road, then you could put a road through the whole thing.
Yeah.
And there are other communities, like, I, I'm, in Princeton, they have backlot subdivisions for situations like this, but we don't have that.
Right.
Pudin Hoverson, which is a part of our bylaws.
Land in Hoverson.
It's not, yeah, it's a special bylaw there where they allow it to go up, and, you know, the catch twenty-two is that the town doesn't wanna take on more roads that aren't up to grade, they have to pile them, they have to provide fire, it's not safe to people to do that. So we just have these rules, subdivision.
Well, we're almost to the point, all of them are town-approved roads now.
Yeah.
We, we had a lot of roads that weren't, there's a few more left, but.
And there's the cost involved, obviously, in repaving them every so, so often. It's not just the up, upkeep and maintenance of the day, of, of the yearly, uh, weather conditions, but also the, the upkeep on a more long-term situation.
But the trouble is.
Five, ten years, you have to potentially repave or do some other work.
Is this a railroad crossing, a railroad that runs through?
No.
There's three streams.
Or a burnt, what are the hash marks here, just a stream?
Stream, that's.
Oh, okay, string. I don't know, I mean, I think, I have somewhat sympathetic with the multi, with the backlot kind of thing like that, like Princeton's done. I think, because there's some, this, this shows up in town a lot, the fairly big lots with no access.
Right, right.
But, but it doesn't exist at the moment, and whether other people.
There's another one, Bramble Street, there's like sixty acres down there, that it only has a right-of-way, it doesn't have any frontage.
Right.
Is there a possibility that, um, they would, um, approve for the one lot for now without make up doing, doing the road, I mean, doing the, the cul-de-sac?
You can talk to Roland, um, he's our building inspector. If you can get a building permit out of him, you don't need to come to planning board.
Correct.
But I think it's unlikely, personally, I think it's unlikely.
And I don't think you can go, you can't go to the ZBA over it.
No.
My, uh.
Well, the first thing would be to go to the building inspector and say, look, this is, this is what we have, can I build?
You did it for that, yeah.
And he will, he will tell you whether or not you can base.
The building inspector does, okay.
Yes, because what he will.
And Mallory's the secretary.
What he, what he will do is, is he will look, he will look at the plans and he will make a decision based on the facts of what you have there currently. And he will tell you what you, potentially, will tell you what you need to have in place, or why, if he says no, this, he has to give you the, he should be giving you the reasons why not. And then you work from there to get the things need, that are necessary to bring you up to the standards that are required. And that at least gives you sort of a starting point.
Yeah, that, I guess that's what I need, because I really, I'm new at this, and I don't know what to ask, who to ask, um. I think he's gonna say you gotta put in a cul-de-sac, but, so.
Yeah.
But it would be the building inspector first, that would really.
But I think it's, I think it's good for the building inspector to come back and provide that, that initial guidance, right?
Yeah, so what I have is a called a zoning determination request form, um, and I have a blank copy right here, so I'm gonna email that to you right now, just get that filled out and provide all your supporting documents, and then you can email it back to me, um, and I will get it over to Roland for you.
Okay, all right.
You wanna keep one of these sets to give to him?
He does everything digital, so if you have them digital. Mary, let's, I might not wanna say it, 'cause I'm on.
Again, we have also really limited powers as a planning board, we, we gotta work within the framework we have, so.
Now, to build, bring it up to code, does that mean installing, um.
Pavement, gravel, digging.
Yeah, doing the whole grading and the.
Drainage.
I think it's, I think you're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars, at least.
I have no idea the cost, I just know it's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find out, like, what kind of cost are we talking about, you know?
And the only way you can do it is have, have somebody that does that kind of work officially, and then say, all right. Unofficially, this is what I propose, what it might cost you, and they haven't even looked at it yet, 'cause you don't, you gotta find in the ground. So it's, you don't know.
Right. Yeah, and, you know, it's hard to jump in and spend a lot of money before we even.
Get denied.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that.
Sure.
Well, the.
That's why I think it's not a bad idea to, uh, work with the, uh, building inspector right from the beginning. He can tell you yes, no, and if it's no, if it's yes, it's great, but if it's no, he can tell you, the reason I'm saying no is this, this, and this.
Okay.
Now you have something to work with.
Well, that's good, yeah, that's, that's helpful, 'cause I, poor Bill, I, I asked him earlier on, and, and I, 'cause I just didn't, I had no clue where to go from here, you know, and.
The problem is the access, I'm just surprised I let him do that back in eighty-nine.
Yeah, I don't know.
When, when did that go up? Yeah.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Probably because there was, it would, you know, they thought, well, we're not creating a subdivision.
Seventy-nine, you're a lot with twenty feet of frontage.
You know, exactly, it was just one lot, so I don't know who he talked into getting it, but, and it was a group home, and it was a good cause.
There's a lot of watch like that.
But when we get permits, that's not how it comes through for those type of things.
How does, how does.
We don't even know.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
So, how do you?
So when.
Turn into a whole.
Wait.
It's literally twenty feet.
I'm sorry.
She is a point of order, and, actually, Chris may know this too, 'cause he works in nonprofits, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When we. Yeah, when we get permits for a nonprofit, we don't know it's for a nonprofit, um, for a group home or anything like that, it strictly comes through as a building permit.
Okay.
Um, so that never has any determination on zoning, it, it either has to be compliant or it's non-compliant with the ZBI.
Okay.
So we have no idea, that has nothing to do with.
Is it always been the case, or, uh, is it something that's been more recent?
It should always be the case.
Can you, can you ask Roland for us if he knows why that would have been approved?
Sure.
And it may be because it was approved, they're willing to recognize that road and that would help her a lot, then she'd only have to pay for the cul-de-sac. She wanted to put the road in.
Yeah.
But you talk to him and put it in. He's gotta make that decision, but that should be pointed out to him.
Okay.
Then you can arrange me to to meet with him.
Yeah, I'll ask him to come in, um, and maybe we can do a face-to-face. He hasn't done any since COVID, but maybe it's.
I appreciate all your help.
Okay.
I know I'm not that, I know I'm not very, you know, versed in.
You have a lot of good material here, as a matter of fact. If it weren't for the fact that we have these design, these drawings, I think it would've been much, much more difficult for us to interpret this here. But again, I think the important thing here is, is for you to understand and note, is this A, as a planning board, we cannot tell you how much the cost is. That is something that we're actually will have to give you. But I think that instead of jumping into that area first, you really need to know what you need to do in order to build your home.
Right.
And that means that you have to go to the building inspector. The building inspector is the one who's going to tell you yes or no right off the bat. And again, once you know why the no is, then you have very concrete things, then you have very concrete things that you need to address. And that's, that's black and white.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you very much. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you for coming.
I want to.
Be more helpful.
I know, two people in a row. We really can't solve the problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I sent it from the planning board email, so if you don't get it, just let me know, okay?
Okay, thanks, Mel, we appreciate it, honey.
That would be nice.
Thank you, you too.
So.
That one stays here.
That's ours.
Thank you.
I'm walking off for this.
The other one there too.
Yep. Oh, a whole stack, huh?
Hey. Good night.
Okay, the, the next item on our agenda was the MRPC presentation from Jonathan Boss and we got a call this afternoon. An email, actually. He sent us an email saying that his coworker came down with COVID.
Oh my god.
And he was exposed.
Potentially.
Potentially. He was exposed and actually Jonathan Boss has a vaccine. So he said, can I come or can I come? And Mallory says the verdict on that situation is you cannot come.
No.
So he is not here, which is just as well, considering the time.
He could've zoomed.
Well, he's also scheduled for another Zoom at six thirty tonight too.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so we were trying to work, we were trying to help him out, but it just didn't happen tonight, so.
Okay.
So, um, next thing is.
The error.
The error. So, the error. So here's what happened with the error. The zoning bylaws passed in October of nineteen eighty-nine. And at that time, the commercial zone went all the way from the end of the town center zone, there by the fields, playing fields, all the way up to Pitcherville. And then in nineteen ninety-one, so two years later, the bylaw re-zoned it to shrink back the commercial zone to end at Ragged Hill Road, everything going north, all being residential again. And that was put into our zoning uh, bylaw, okay? And then in nineteen ninety-two, a year later, they amended the map again and they sort of split the cake. It's the map that now exists and which has existed since nineteen ninety-two, that ends the commercial zone at
Gardner Cut.
Where the Commonwealth of Mass Land is.
Gardner Cut-off Road.
Right, right by the north end of the cutoff road, right?
Mm-hmm.
Of Gardner Road. But the, but the zoning bylaw was never fixed to match that. So, um, so I read this and I thought, what the heck, because all of uh, you know, the sixty-nine Gardner Road is in that, the stuff, I said, what, what have we been doing here? So I, I really went back, I checked it all. It's just a matter that nobody ever fixed it, all right?
Who caught this? Who caught this?
I did.
You caught it?
Failure. Because I thought, what if it's right?
I'm glad she's good.
But it's clearly a clerical error. It is clearly clerical error and the proof of that is, you can look at these zoning bylaws, you know, we were giving away back when and even that map has the fix.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and it stated.
Done in here.
It just wasn't done in here.
I hope Todd has caught up with CPR and fibrillators.
You can imagine, you can imagine, they're like, oh my, anyway. So what we need to do, if you flip to this suggestion is, is to cross out the the, is, and we can do this as a clerical fix, because we know it's a clerical error, is um, is we need to strike the language, all land currently designated within the light industrial district, which is what they call it.
Yeah.
Located on the east side of Gardner Road between High Street, High Street and Morgan, and on the west side between Gardner Road and Ragged Hill shall be amended residential agriculture, right? We need to take that out.
Yeah.
And this would leave us with, then we need to tweak the language just a tiny bit. So, so it would read, the official map, which is how it was, now it says, the official zoning map entitled zoning districts which was prepared by IEP Inc. in nineteen eighty-eight is hereby made part of the zoning bylaws and shall be on file with the town clerk. So we just need to change that, I think, to say, the official zoning map originally entitled zoning districts prepared by IEP Inc. nineteen eighty-eight, as may be amended, is hereby made part of the zoning bylaws and shall be on file with the town clerk. And then the footnote needs to be corrected. To say it was in fact amended in December nineteen two, uh, it was amended in six twenty-four ninety-one, December, with, December nineteen ninety-two, and then revised and digitized, which is, gets us to access GIS in two thousand and one. So, um.
I make that motion.
Can I ask a clarifying question before you make the motion?
Yeah.
Where it says amended six twenty-four, that was the town meeting, and then the December nineteen ninety-two is what? Cause I'm confused.
This, they eight, eighty-nine was when they passed the bylaw.
Ninety-one was amended.
Which included it all the way residential. Ninety-one, they amended it to shrink back. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, I have to go, I have to go back. The map was amended, okay, I'm gonna go through this again. The bylaw passed in eighty-nine. The map was amended in ninety-one, the map, to re-zone sixty-eight from Ragged Hill to Pitcherville, all residential.
Mm-hmm.
And then in ninety-two, it was amended again to the status it is today.
Okay, so I think we need to just make sure that the amendment clarifies that what is in December nineteen ninety-two is that second piece, right?
Correct.
So I think we need to have two, we should have two sub, uh, not subtitles, but two footnotes.
Okay, we could, well.
Cause there's two amendments. There's an amendment in nineteen ninety-one and then there is a, there, there's, there's a, there's a change that also took place in nineteen ninety-two.
I think though, the, the trouble is that the footnotes are con, I mean, maybe footnote A eight or something, I don't know how you do that, because footnote nine is the next.
Cause the last footnote would go with the, the last change, correct?
No, you have to put in all the changes, right? No? Other, other bylaws have a series of changes.
Correct, they have them one after the other.
Okay.
But we could maybe list them underneath each other.
Precisely, you can have a footnote and then you could simply have one after the other. That way we understand that they were two separate.
All under eight.
All under eight, but there's, there's, there's an amendment, uh, on such a date, and there's another amendment.
Put amended before each.
Exactly.
Now, should we also make mention that it was changed today by the board because
Cause it was a correction of a clerical error?
Correct.
Should that, should that, that should be noted too, right?
So, okay, just say clerical error corrected is the third line in the footnote?
Yes.
By the board.
It just keeps the history correct and, and up to date.
He's about clerical, C L, yeah, okay, error, it does. Corrected, in today's date. Alright, so Mallory would read amended six twenty-four ninety-one, amended December nineteen ninety-two. And then underneath that revised and digitized two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
It didn't actually change zones, but it did revise it because it put a lot of information on it hadn't existed.
Okay.
Right? So revised and digitized in two thousand and eleven, and then you'll put clerical error, and then the fourth line under, clerical error corrected on today's date if we do it today.
Okay.
So, the motion would be to correct the clerical error in Article Three, Section three point two of the Town and Hubbardton zoning bylaws caused by a failure to reflect zoning change made in nineteen ninety-two and shown on zoning maps dated nineteen ninety-two and subsequent. And the subsequent current, and the current zoning map dated two thousand and eleven. So that the section reads zoning map with footnote eight, the official zoning map originally entitled zoning districts prepared by IEP Inc. nineteen eighty-eight as may be amended, is hereby made part of these zoning bylaws and shall be on file with the clerk. And then the footnote eight would amended six twenty-four nineteen ninety-one, amended December nineteen ninety-two, revised and digitized two thousand and eleven, and clerical error corrected with today's date. So.
I'll make that motion. I'm not gonna restart.
Mallory has it all, right? You got it out.
Yeah, it's on camera.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll proceed to vote, lift all eye.
Steiger, aye.
Holman's aye, Monroe aye.
Thanks, guys. You can't believe how long it took for me to figure that out.
Take an aspirin now.
Oh, take two.
I was gonna say, take two. This is just, just an impossible night, you know, it's telling people we can't do stuff, we have to fix them, ugh. And now we come to fifty-five Old Boston Turnpike, which was, now the Dakotas, did you talk to them about coming? No.
I called, but I did not get a return.
Okay, so I follow a lot about this and we've done a lot of research on this. So, the, the story with this is, there was a special permit that was granted back in December of two thousand and nine. Was that in the documents?
Yes.
Okay. For Cindy Phillips, but it was never, it went to court, I don't know what happened with the court case, but it was never recorded. And there's an absolute black and white law under Massachusetts general law, a forty-eight, section eleven, section eleven, paragraph, I think, seven, which I have here, which says that a special permit does not take effect, here it is, yeah, paragraph seven.
This all came.
Unless it's recorded in the registry of deeds.
Which it never was over twelve years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't. So, in addition to that, um, she's got a, so I don't think we can revoke it because it never existed. It never was valid.
This has come to the zoning board of appeals quite a few times. This has also come to the local law enforcement numerous times. And the complaints, a lot of people have been involved with these complaints.
May I ask a.
Wait, the complaints about the unrecorded permits of these dogs.
The complaints get brought up numerous times.
Well, most recently, we had a gentleman who was a relative.
David. Right, so it was actually, so well, here's what David Dakota said. David, this is family land. David Dakota is the trustee of the trust that actually owns this parcel of land. And this is way back in the court records that Mallory found. And that, that he said, I never consented as the owner of this land for that to be put there. And you know, our zoning special permits, cause this has come up, you can't just go, it came up last year when somebody was gonna put a marijuana farm on Mary's, you know, and you say, you can't do that, you have to have, you don't have to own the lot with a special permit on it, but you do have, the owner has to sign off.
Which he did not.
Which, which he did not, okay? So, we don't have a, a special permit and it's really very black and white in all of the, like, the guidebooks. It has to be recorded to be affected. So, I wrote a letter, which is in your package, to try to fire up another, a group of people that are responsible, cause we don't have enforcement power, right? So this is this very detailed letter to town officials that I wrote. And I said, please, can we put together an enforcement committee, which we did, once, what do we call that?
Two forty-eight Gardner Road.
Two four, two forty-eight, where we all met, we had a, was during COVID, a big Zoom session. And we had an action plan, we were gonna go out there together, we were gonna inspect, which wound up, and that's also on the agenda, cause. But anyway, finally, so I, I will do what you wanna do, but I thought, my original conception was, we revoke the permit and we would invite the neighbors to come in as well as Dakota, send the, you know, like you would to get a special permit, right? You'd have a hearing.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't have a special permit that's in effect and I don't wanna concede that point.
Can I make, can I make a quick question?
Sure.
Ask you a quick question. Is, is, is the special permit, the fact that it, it was never recorded, does it therefore expire? And so, there's no way that the person or persons to whom that special permit was granted to at that point in time can turn around and says, well, we are going to record this at this point in time?
Correct.
Uh, first, my opinion, it was never approved, so it's like if I started building a house and I never got approval. Bottom line is, it, it was never in effect.
Can you send a letter that says?
Wait a minute, the special permit was, I, there's a signature on that special permit and if you would be so kind, just indicate who signed that?
It was an illegal special permit, put that way.
Well, that's, that's a.
It was, it was, I think it was, what happened was, you know, there's an appeal period, right, before they can.
So, we have.
So this was signed by the clerk dated, and then it was appealed to court, I believe.
So this, this is the special permit, right?
Yes.
And the special permit was signed at that point in time with the chair, Mr. Ritchie, who was chair of the, of the uh, planning board.
Yep.
Caleb Blanger.
Yep.
Who was probably also another person who was part of this, uh, uh, member of the board, Mr. John Harden.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the alternate, which was Peter Carmozino. So, th- this special permit was actually signed off by these four individuals.
The previous planning board.
Who was part of a prior planning board.
Right.
And so, the, my question still is this here, even though they have not filed this here, can the person, even though this is maybe not a legit special permit, can they still turn around and say, well, we are going to file it now?
Well, I don't, I think.
Is there an expiration time?
Two years.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so because of that, as a result of that, this is null and void.
Right, so could we send a letter to them stating that to cease and desist all activities listed under the special permit that has
But there's no special permit.
Been expired?
No, cause I don't wanna concede the permit. Here's what I wanna do. I, I suggest you writing the following letter, which, which I was working on today, so I apologize, but to Cindy Phillips, who's a woman, right, that has it, at fifty-five, and say, we are writing, this would be on, you know, our letterhead, right? We are writing to inform you that we have received a complaint that you are operating a kennel for at least five large dogs in the property located fifty-five Old Boston Turnpike. Owned by Dakota nominee trust, David Dakota trustee. Under Hubbardson general bylaws, um, what's it, twenty-six? Uh, regulation of dogs, only three dogs may be kept at a property with, without securing a kennel license. Under Hubbardson zoning bylaw four point two J, a kennel for five or more dogs in a residential zone requires a special permit. According to town records, you had a kennel license for four dogs in two thousand and nineteen, which expired in March, March thirty-first, twenty twenty, and was not renewed for either twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. Town records also indicate the planning board issued you a special permit on December second, two thousand and nine, which never took effect because it was never recorded in the registry of deeds as required by Massachusetts general laws forty-eight, section eleven. Mister David Dakota also states that he never consented to the operation of a kennel at this location and his consent is required as the sole trustee of the trust that owns this property. For the foregoing reasons, the kennel you are operating at fifty-five Old Turnpike Road is not in compliance with the state or local law and must be discontinued. Accordingly, the planning board is referring this matter to Hubbardson zoning enforcement officer and to the dog officer for further action. If you have ceased to operate this kennel at this location, please notify the planning board at the number provided above. And then CC this to the dog officer, the town manager, or the town administrator and Roland.
Yeah.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Can we time limit the time by which we are required to expect a notification back from the current person this is being addressed to?
Um, if you cease to operate the kennel at this location, please notify us immediately, right?
Yes.
Immediately, and then.
But no later than.
An actual specified time period.
Okay.
But no later than.
Yeah.
But not later than.
You don't want thirty days, two weeks?
No.
A week?
Ten days.
I know that the town clerk issued, um, a bunch of signs and violation letters to her today.
Today?
This is because, they shouldn't, and they didn't bother to tell me, this is what, I didn't put the clerk on the letter. So I, then I would CC this letter and send them to, that the planning board has no enforcement power, but we believe that these, these violations should be enforced.
Yes.
Because we can't spend, our, we have no power to enforce it.
And we have to, we have to go with the enforcement. I think you should also CC it to the police department.
Okay.
They get involved in a lot of these calls.
Quite a bit.
So, if they know the background, they.
Well, especially because this has a, this has, I mean, the, the dog control, the dog officer is certainly capable, hopefully, but because of the type of dogs that are in here, involved here, some form of security may be required additionally, then.
Well, so we've got the police department, the clerk, the dog officer, Roland.
Town manager.
Roland and the town manager. And we did, even though this is still on our list and it's coming back, and I was hoping John was gonna be here tonight, but I think we should send to the, to, to them a separate cover letter. Copy them on this one and then a cover letter saying, we're expecting an enforcement action to be taken against this individual unless she writes that she's discontinued, unless we hear within the next ten days that she's discontinued. To the whole line of them, the police, the clerk.
Okay. And this is very similar to what we should have right now on two forty-eight.
Happening at the other one.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's in the next, that's the next thing. Alright, so everybody agrees, I can just fix this letter again, a little bit.
I make a motion that we ask Alice to sign and send that letter as revised.
As a, as a, as a, as a representative of the board, right?
Correct.
Okay.
As an official letter from the board.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote?
Monroe aye.
Though Holman's aye.
Steiger, aye.
And lift all eye. Okay.
And thank you for addressing this here.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, we, I hope I get somewhere.
Did you do a site for some? Cause I thought that at some point in time you were going to do it out there.
I, Bill told me not to go out there.
Okay, good, I'm glad to. Okay, good, I'm glad to hear you talk.
Yeah, I don't want to give about police officers.
He, he talked about it, I said, no, that's, no, I've been down there numerous times over the years.
But- Yeah, David Dakota showed up at the office Tuesday,
It's for, it's a-
and he got in my face and said, I'm tearing down that fence in two weeks, and then walked off.
David gets-
Okay. It's on your property.
Right.
But he thinks that the town actually is in charge of what happens on the land now, and-
Well, I would love to see some action, because there, if, I, I argue with these people, it, the enforcement people, what good is zoning if nobody's ever gonna enforce it?
I think- Correct. We, we need to send this out as a, a letter saying, look, this needs to be taken care of. And this has been an ongoing issue for a long time, I-
Same with two forty eight Gardner Road, they both, those two-
This has been going on a lo- much longer.
Have legal files that are-
And we had, we had a process. It needs to be-
It needs to go through Roland. Roland is the one who needs to do it. All of it, and Roland needs to initiate it.
And we have the documents.
And if he's not, then we've gotta do something about that.
We gotta find someone who, yeah.
Well, Roland was in on the, the, the Zoom, and has he seen those letters? Can you remind him we have a process for doing this from town council?
Zoom. Yeah.
We just need to-
He, oh, he knows, he, that's the process, it's his job. He's a zoning enforcement officer. The town council sent over the, how to write a zoning enforcement letter. So he was, uh, I don't know if he was a little peeved or if he was a little ticked off, but he got it, and he said, why do we go to town council? Tell me how to do my job.
Okay, so it is Roland should be the lead person.
Roland needs to be the one who's in charge of all of it.
Okay, and I'll, I'll make him first.
Yeah.
And tell him, I mean, I, if somebody honestly could, yeah, I don't know how the, what the state of the dogs are. I'm a dog owner, and I worry about them.
It needs to be enforced.
It's very dangerous.
Correct.
So it's one point.
Well, we haven't had any complaints that they're not being taken care of.
You haven't? Oh, that's good to know. Okay. So it isn't a rescue.
So, I'm just saying, from the information we got today, if they're getting out,
I have heard.
Yes.
As long as somebody's taking care of them, and takes them back in, then that's okay, but we didn't hear that either.
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, well, we'll, we leave it at-
So-
Is there a leash letter?
Yes.
Sometimes you put too many, a lot of things in a letter, and then it allows an opportunity to argue each little point.
Yeah.
So this is just basically where it is. We know that she doesn't have it, and, all right, moving right along, um, this is another, look how late it is. Can I just do new business, uh, and take it out of order?
Directional error. We did that, right, right.
Um, before we get into the marijuana thing.
Okay, we'll make-
Um, I just wanna go down to new business, so Places Associates, there's a contract, which you got a copy of late, and the deal with that is, is that, um, and I had to explain this to, to David Nixon, too. There's never been a written agreement between Places Associates in our town, because every time, uh, we, we or another board in town need his services on something, there's a contract between the board and him to provide these services, which is then okay, paid by the applicant, right? That's the way it worked for like, right, so. But many towns do have this overarching agreement, right? So what happened was, Bill sent me a note saying that his, he's been audited by his insurance company, and the insurance company's requiring that every municipality for which he does work, he has an agreement with the town itself. So this is the document that he's put together to do that. We don't sign it, because it's with the town. But I did get a question from David Nixon, um, you know, he wants to know we're satisfied with his services, that we want the town to do this, right? So I think the thing to do is if we, we read it, I mean, it would still go through town council and
Review it.
But, but, yeah, but if you've had a chance to read it, I read it, it's, it's a pretty generic contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it doesn't try to get him out of things, put all the liability on us, it's not unfair, and it does pretty accurately describe what he does for us.
Mm-hmm.
So I was just thinking, um, we should take a vote tonight to send, uh, to note, while we, to, to let the, um, just a vote you can send to the town minister, the whole, uh, to the town administrator, just to vote that, um, we have looked over the agreement, and we would, uh, be, and we're in favor of having Places Associates continue to provide service for the planning board.
So a vote of support.
Yeah.
A vote of support for the contract, as it's written.
For the contract. Yeah, that, yes, you can write, say it that way.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that at this point in time, the board, uh-
Send a letter?
Send a letter to the town administrator indicating that we, as a board, support the, not only the relationship that we have with, uh, Places and Associates, but also that the, the relationship guided by the contract that has been so provided and presented to us.
Second, somebody?
I'll make the second.
Further discussion? None?
Steiger, aye.
Homan's aye.
Monroe, aye.
Lipton, aye. Your name is? You wanna? Send that to me, and I'll send them, and I'll just sign, just, I don't know.
Yeah.
Type my name on it.
Can I, can I ask something?
Yes.
Since we already jumped down, I see under here, we got an update for the Marinelli pets. Can we, is there something you could throw out at us?
You saw that, no, it isn't really an update. You saw my letter, right? Remember, we had this letter?
Yes. Uh-huh.
So, that's where it stands.
Okay.
But I, do you want me to follow up with that letter, just with phone calls? Bill says yes.
If, if you want to, I think-
All right. I wanted to be not, on, I wanted the letter to come off, we support doing this. We'd really like to see this happen, but we really don't have the, the ability to do it.
Yes. Correct.
So, okay, I will follow up with the letter.
Is that okay with you?
I mean, a phone call, a phone call to Mr. Wiggins.
Is that okay? Yeah.
And Mr. Sales. And ask if, you know, okay, um, I figured it was, the letter was somewhat helpful, because I told them who has the access to sixty eight, and the fact that Brown needs Phil, and the fact that we favor housing over other development options, so it was a little bit of help, right?
Yeah.
But we can't take the whole thing on. Okay, so, and then also, we might as well just do s- uh, seven, which is, I, it's truly not unanticipated. But John, who came in, you know, to be reappointed, was the one that said to me, you know, two forty eight, because he lives right there, is as bad as it ever was.
Yep, I know, I see it all the time. Nothing's changed.
So, right, so I think we also should have a vote to send, uh, uh, another letter that we've had reports that it's not any better, and we wish to proceed directly to an enforcement action on that.
Okay.
Too. Okay, we agree?
Should we send this to the building inspector, to the selectman?
It needs to go to all of them.
Everybody, yeah.
I think all the letters need to be included to the selectmen, so they understand that enforcement isn't happening like they should.
Yeah. And again, um, I would also CC the police department, so they not, they understand what's going on.
Okay, the same, same group we did the last time, except the dog officer.
Cause that's their after.
That's what I would do.
My, my, my understanding was, is that there had been a discussion, and there had been a fairly large group of members of the town who had addressed this in the past, but we have not received any updates on this here.
The, so I, we did get a call from a neighbor when, after the the original discussion took place, and there was some movement, and they had gotten rid of some of the vehicles, and they had gotten some dumpsters, and the trash were getting cleaned up, and then it just came to us at an abrupt halt. And then there was some turnover in the selectman's office, because it was the select board admin that was kinda heading this all up and getting the coalition together. Um, so, there wasn't any more follow-up on that, and Roland never took to the, this is how you write an enforcement letter.
And just to be very clear, there's still commercial activity taking place at the location, and that-
Well, we know if it is cr- commercial, but it appears that it could be.
Appears to be.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any on the evidence.
We don't know, unless somebody goes up there and tells us, I don't think.
But there's also-
But it's a storage of vehicles, multiple, there's no class two or class three license at that facility.
There's also, there's also-
Correct.
Exactly, and there are more than two, uh, unregistered slash unlicensed vehicles at the location, correct?
Unregistered. Correct. Correct.
Should we send a letter just out, the fact that, and what's the update on this to all these departments, what's transpired, where are we with this?
Well, I think, I think in addition, I, I think in addition to, the, the way we may want to phrase the, the letter is, is that this was presented originally by our board to the select board. It appears that action has not been taken, and that at this point in time, we, as planning board, ask that the zoning enforcement officer
Commence an enforcement action.
commence the enforcement action, and provide the feedback that we need as the planning board, in order to understand whether or not further action needs to be taken.
Which we haven't received yet. Which we haven't received yet, anything, correct?
We have not received anything.
Right, there, there was a meeting scheduled to go to a site visit, and-
Yeah, then the, I didn't report it back that there was-
If they were actually cleaning up their act.
Positive, clean up, and then it was, so there was, we didn't go to the meeting, and that's where it ended, right there, and so.
And then it stopped. So instead of sending a, kind of a nasty letter, should we just reiterate the fact that nothing has transpired since this has stopped?
Can we please?
And this popped, this popped up s- many months ago.
And we have, and we had- Right, and then since we have a new town administrator, maybe a little sugar going on instead of vinegar, maybe we should do it that way?
Well, we-
Just to say, we need this taken care of, where are we at?
Well, I, we recommend that we proceed to an enforcement action on this.
To an enforcement action, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just, and we never got any feedback from anybody either, correct?
Yes. Yes, I'll try to, can you get those dates together when, so we have a little one paragraph history of where it stands, and-
So I'll just-
Some kind of e- Yes.
The select board is the business licensing authority for the town, isn't it, so?
Help me with that.
Correct. Correct.
It's licensing, licensing for commercial activities of the type that potentially could have been there, but because, but, but because we are, from a planning board perspective, looking at it from a zoning perspective,
Which there is.
the, 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 the biggest question here is, is what is, what is being violated? Is the violation solely the fact that there is many unlicensed and potentially unregistered vehicles at the lot? And separately, is this commercial activity taking place at the lot? The commercial activity is certainly something that we have authority to
Correct.
work on and enforce.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The, the unlicensed vehicles, I think, is under the general bylaws.
Correct.
And so as a result of that, that is, that is the select board that needs to manage that. And so we brought it up with the select board because of the number of unlicensed vehicles. We did not know whether or not there was commercial activity involved with this year, which it appears to be, but we don't, we don't know.
Correct.
But the authority to, to grant a dealer a license or anything along the lines of that should be riding with the select board, so.
Correct.
Correct.
With and only with the select board, and taking into consideration that is not a commercially zoned area.
But, but I think what happened, our town administrator got activated. Could that have been all part of this?
Yes. My recollection is, is that there was a meeting with the select board, and at that point in time, this plan of meeting amongst the various entities in the town was going to address this issue, and then that, it appears that it did not materialize or nothing came out of it.
Yeah, because somebody said they were gonna do something about, you know, like, the, the tenant started to
Right.
take action, and then as soon as he backed off, that's-
Whoa, sweet job.
She's good at it.
You're bugging me.
Okay. Me too, I was waiting for it to come today.
Okay, you got, just a couple more announcements, and then I don't, I'm, it's late, but I'm gonna give fifteen minutes
Yes.
to the, the, the marijuana stuff. So, I just wanted to say, the Ragged Hill Lot, the Habitat for Humanity, got their building permit today.
Oh, awesome, awesome.
Yay, from the Mallory, yes, so this-
Congratulations. That's really good news.
One small victory.
That's awesome.
And the sign by law is now the attorney general's office for approval by them, so we'll keep our fingers crossed, and the-
What about the other bylaw change that we made, the one of the, uh, the growth?
Yeah, well, the growth, we have to take that up, that's still in our pot.
Well, no, because we, we did extend it, right?
Oh, we did extend, that has to go too to the AG.
That Alice Glory.
Yeah, he, Francois's right about that.
Thank you, Francois.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that one. She told me this today, that it was with the AG. All right, let me ask Glory.
Yeah.
Can you-
I'll get an update from her, let you guys know.
Okay, let us know, don't forget.
Right.
May I, uh, quickly comment on that? I, I think, I mean, from our last sessions that took place, you had indicated there was potentially some concern by extending it just by one year, because people think of this year potentially as kicking the can down the road, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And, and my, my concern here is, is that I don't think we should just send this here to, potentially to the attorney general's office without an explanation and thought that went behind the extension. Main reason is, is number one, is, is that the planning board had, uh, enormous amounts of other work that came about, and this did creep up to us as a surprise.
Mm-hmm.
Because we didn't know this. And second is, we had the COVID, so we are asking for this extension, not just simply to kick the can down the road, but rather to
Okay.
Give us more time.
Yeah, the ma-
Give us time to do the actual work that needs to be done in order to be able to look at the growth.
And also the master plan.
And the master plan.
Okay, I'll send you, uh, like, a paragraph that you could put in. The planning board's asked that we
Okay. Include this.
Include the following explanation, okay?
Yeah.
I hope you have a list of what I'm supposed to be doing. Okay.
Heard my fingers going, right?
Yeah, um, and I also just wanted to say, and then we're going right bit, then we're going to marijuana, is that there was a letter that I, that Mallory forwarded to me, and I don't, you know, sometimes I get stuff, and I don't know whether you really wanna hear it, but the people that have bought the, they, uh, they have bought it, or maybe there's still option to buy it, the thirty six Gardner Road Storage Facility
Yep, yes.
um, have, wrote a letter, wrote a note, that Mallory correctly forwarded to Bill, which was basic-
They wrote directly to Bill.
Oh, they did write directly, and then he forwarded to me. Okay, all right, so I got the order wrong, but anyway, it involved, um, I think mostly grading issues, right? Can we change the grading here and there, and it can, it be done as an, as a, um, you know, technical amendments to the plan?
There was a lot of issues between Bill and him over that, correct?
There was. Well, not, well, Bill and the former guy, so I don't know how, how inclined Bill will be to give, but it'll depend on, you know, what, what he's asking for, I would say.
Right, and why?
And why. So I, so I'm not asking us to take any action, I'm just saying
Good information.
that I did get that, because I tried to report all communications. So, okay, now we need to go back and do the, the, uh, which I really hope we have a lot more time for, but-
Uh, Madam Chair, before we do that, uh, under new business,
Yes.
I did receive, uh, an email from the EDC, uh, the Economic Development Commission. They are gonna be meeting next week on the twenty first.
Oh, good.
And on their agenda is talking about a, a couple sample accessory use bylaws for the farms.
Great.
Cool.
They, uh, they were specifically looking at, uh, Rutland and one in Baltimore.
Oh, I know, hold up, had one, I know. But I was talking to somebody that went to the Milk Room, which is the first one launched in Rutland. So, and I know that, well, great, just remind them, you know, keep us in the loop. And I also told him to, um, to say to them, you know, they, they're part of this, expanding the commercial district, and we need to be, have a seat at that table at some point.
Mm-hmm.
So he's gonna do that, too. Oh, and there's one more thing, which is like, one, which is MRPC wants a representative from this committee.
Yeah, did you ever get a response back on what that entails?
No.
Do you know? She never got back to me.
But Mallory, who's our source of all inside knowledge here, says that-
She's got the yin.
Yeah, well, that, she's just dealt with other boards. It's that nobody actually, from these towns, goes to MRPC meetings. It's just who MRPC reaches out to,
Mm-hmm.
we believe. So I said, if that's the case, then they can designate me, but if you have to go to meetings,
Right.
then I need somebody else, because I've done all the, I'm already on MJTC, and you know, it's, so, um, you wanna find out more, or you wanna just?
Yeah, we can find out more if we need to.
I take, talk to her, and if it's, if they don't expect me to attend regular meetings, just put my name in it, unless anybody else wants to do this.
Okay. Well, it has to be a vote, it has to be officially appointed, so.
Oh.
I make that motion.
So you're gonna get a doc.
So, before, before, before we go with that, when, when we had our last meeting, I thought there were still some open uh, positions that we needed, like, for example, I'm part of the CIPC, you're part of the et cetera. I thought there was maybe one or two that were still open, right?
We-
We have a list of those?
Uh, we do, but I don't have it right here.
Okay.
But did we get, I thought-
Thought we got Phil's mom.
I thought we did, no, because we, we knew that John DiMalia-
The question was-
Was trying to get that.
John, John was the former Economic Development Committee, but he's never gone to any of the meetings and his term expired.
Correct.
So.
And I thought there were still a few committees that we still needed to fill.
What about that one about the town manager? You're doing that too, right? The, uh, Capital Improvements Committee?
Capital Improvements, that's me. The CIPC.
CIPC, EDC, MRPC, pull up our- I don't know. We look it over again.
I'm gonna pull it open right now.
Cause I actually do kinda have that.
Just wanna make sure that we have the, we have a little of our-
Have a list, yeah.
Too much going on.
And, and just put it in the- Oh, I know, the CPC. Does anybody wanna do that besides me? I, that's, that is actually a really important committee. But it's generally chairs, generally, I think.
Generally what?
The chairman of committees that are, but I don't think it's by, it's required to be the chair.
You wanna break that mold?
I would love to break that mold. You know, MRPC, I mean, it's, it, or the, the CPA, it's how those funds get divvied up, right? And so nobody, you know, whoever represents us has to talk, but it's affordable housing, that's what it is. What do we have to advocate for? They meet-
Because we are.
We are that committee. And that's how, so the twenty, which is such a small ask, I mean, open space got seventy-five thousand and but we still got pushed back even on our twenty, you know, I mean, it's, town's not used to doing this stuff, so. And I don't know that we're gonna have a need for that money, aside from maybe helping out a little bit more with Habitat or something, cause I don't know. I don't know. But if anyone else wants, it's, but it's very fascinating committee. They did the playground, they did, but it's a commitment. It's a two-hour meeting once a month.
I can't take anymore on this tiny year.
Yeah. I'm hoping to pass off the chairmanship at some point this year, so I thought, well, if I kept.
We should have the full members of the board here too, work on that.
After we have a vote, uh, don't you have to take, we didn't-
Yes, we have to take a vote.
Yeah, we need to follow.
That's your first thing you're supposed to do after you have an election.
Vote for.
We reorganized after the election.
We did already reorganize.
Oh, you did that? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did that. We did that. We did that.
I will think-
I don't think you were here.
Yeah, what we did was, was like, I-
Congratulations, Bill, your chair.
The committee is just handing. Thanks a lot.
I disagree to stay on for a while with the help of halfway through this year.
So, we have the CPC, EDC, CIPC, MJCT.
Wow.
Okay, and do we have, and people appointed all those?
Yeah, you were CPC, Chris was EDC. CIPC was Francois, and then you're doing MJCT, correct?
Okay. And as long as it's a nominal, I think it is for MRPC, you can put me on it.
Okay.
Uh, ED, I'm still missing one. CPC, EDC, oh, the-
CIPC and then the monitor that's already ready.
Yeah, CPC, the, C-I-C.
Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
And that's Francois.
Have you checked your phone?
So, um.
Doesn't happen that fast.
If anybody wants, would rather go to MJTC, if you're an engineer and you're really into like engineering of streets, but, but you gotta go there, cause they have, that's how you find out about the grant opportunities, you know? Um, it's two o'clock in the afternoon, it's really inconvenient time, but.
Very inconvenient.
Need to sign it. Um, anyway, let's go with that and-
You've got nine minutes.
Okay. She's making me sign. Sign up here. Alright.
You can print it in.
Okay, so, um, so, okay, we have to talk about marijuana. We have to actually get somewhere on this. And I was like really bogged down with it and then I talked to Christopher, who seemed like light at the end of the tunnel. He was willing to take this on. So, um, go ahead, suggest an approach to this problem, cause we need to get there.
So, yes, so I'm, uh, I am happy to, to take a lot of this on and been starting to do some of the research behind the scenes. Um, I did want to hear from everybody on what they thought some of their kinda key issues were on things that we should be looking for in similar bylaws. Uh, because I know one thing that jumps out to all of us is the way our scheme works for residential or the way it doesn't really work but is still in there. Um, and, uh, there's some other issues that other towns have looked into, like the idea that the scheme should be helpful for people who are farmers and are maybe taking a small portion of their land and using that for cultivation. And that different towns have taken kinda different approaches to it, so I wanted to kinda get a sense of what our personality was as a board for what we wanted to look at and investigate.
Are you, are you indicating that they're looking at it as a farming enterprise instead of as a commercial enterprise?
Um, somewhat, yes. They're trying to not make it impossible for a farmer to say, do like an acre of his land set up as a grow. So, at, at, where I think that comes into play would be the idea of trying to push, it, say, it's, some of the towns have tried to just exclude all residential. Uh, some have done things to kinda push it in towards whatever their commercial zoning is. Um, so for, for us, if we were to try to leave the door open for some of those farmers that aren't necessarily in the commercial area, then we're gonna have to think about making some compromises on that.
Do you have some examples that you can down the road share with us in terms of other communities where this has already been floated and looked at?
Yep, there is, uh, there's a town out in Western Mass now, uh, Williamsville, I think it is.
Williams.
Williams Town.
Yeah, Williams.
Williams Town.
No, no, Williams Town, Williamsville. It's in the Berkshires.
Yeah, it was in the Berkshires. Uh, and they, they've been working on essentially the same thing as we're looking at starting now for essentially the same reasons. That once they, they got to know what the process was like, they had an idea what they wanted from it, and they also realized that the, uh, the opportunities for doing it in residential areas were completely untenable as they were. For essentially the same thing that we looked at and we identified was that, well, you kinda could try to do this on a two-acre residential lot and because of the requirements from the CCC, you'd have barbed wire fencing essentially on the lot lines.
That was exactly my, my concern here is, is that the whole security component that comes along with this here. It just, a- and, I mean, th- this is beyond the individual capa- the individual's capability, uh, ability to have their own plants, which I think is like limited to X number of plants per, 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 per person.
Six plants per person, twelve plants per household for a personal use, yes.
Precisely. But we're talking about something that is really different, which is really more of a economic growth opportunity for somebody that goes beyond the personal consumption.
Correct. A CCC-approved tier grower.
My biggest concerns in a residential area is just seeing problems we had up here in Gardner Road with the odor, the security, um, and if they're gonna have that, one of the things that we'll probably talk about later, what are we gonna do to hide that? Like we talked about the bushes and things like that. If that's gonna be a lot and we're gonna allow that in town, so they can do it in residential, then we better really make sure it's not gonna bother people too. Cause the odor, the odor is very strong.
Odor is, is def- definitely a problem. Security for me, I think is also something that needs to be taken into consideration.
Right, because I'm used to fencing, I don't mind it. I worked in jail for thirty di- thirty years, I'm okay with it. But most people don't like that. So, that's another thing, but if you put privacy barriers up, I think that's a good thing. I don't like the fact about up in Gardner Road.
But we also have to take into consideration, I mean, from a residential perspective, the impact that has on your neighbors.
On the neighborhood, yes.
So, if you have a two-acre lot, but you, you, you're, you're, your acreage abuts right next to somebody else and it's, the offset, the offsets, I think are very important.
Correct.
Um, and the security component still needs to be looked into. And I think to Bill's point, things such as odor, things such as growing lights, um.
Well, they said in our process, I believe the growing lights aren't used at night anyways.
Yeah. So, uh, an example of some things that towns have done in relation to that is they, they've set a minimum lot size uh, in, in any zoning area. So, be it five or fifteen acres for even doing the minimum growth. So, say, I believe you can do a tier two in, in our residential zoning. But if you had a minimum size of, um, of fifteen acres, you could have that pretty far away from your neighbors in the property.
Yeah, Ashburn has a five-acre minimum lot size in a residential zone, Barry has a twenty-acre minimum lot size in a residential.
Because a sixty-acre lot would be perfect.
Yeah.
You're not gonna bother anybody.
Yeah, say a sixty-acre lot with twenty feet of road frontage.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, uh.
Is that what Mary wanted to do?
I think it should.
She wants to put a trench of marijuana, no, I'm kidding.
You could also do-
The cause of sex for?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. Don't set me up.
Also having a sliding scale, so a tier one, you need at least a five-acre minimum lot.
Yeah.
A tier two, you need a ten-acre minimum lot, right? And then?
Which doesn't sound unreasonable. Cause I, I know, I've talked to a lot of people over the years, they know I'm involved with zoning a lot, and they think it's horrendous that the town of Hurstston requires two hundred feet with two acres to build. And I said, you know what? The, the people that live in this community don't want a lot of homes on top of each other, and that's why it's like that.
Yep.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of public policy arguments on both sides of that and a lot of state legislation because of it, so. It-
But, but one of the issues that came up with this one was the, the availability of water and the, and, and
Correct. But if you share your own well.
Use. So, that's a good reason for saying you can't draw, you know, fifty thousand gallons of water a day from a two-acre lot, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, it isn't all just about, and then I think, uh, the other thing I want is setbacks. And the setbacks, I was working through these benchmark towns, but the setbacks, it's three hundred feet from a residential zone is common in the number of the ones I looked at.
Is that what you've seen too?
Yeah.
Chris.
Hundred and some bylaws in a minimum I've seen, and three hundred in several. So, because otherwise setbacks just apply to buildings. So, this means the whole grower, the fence, you know, the, so it isn't just the odor, but it's also the razor wire and everything, the lights, the security lights and-
A couple of the towns I looked at did have formal-
I think I'm allergic to marijuana.
Just to mention them.
A couple of towns did have formal plans and formal requirements for, uh, for odor mitigation.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I'm sorry.
Formal plans for what?
Some of them did have formal requirements for odor mitigation plans to be submitted. So, whereas that's something that kinda grew up organically in the process we had with the ones that came before us, it's an actual formal requirement.
And that's my biggest worry too, cause a lot of the discussion we've had with the folks that we're working with now is the odor is a problem. So, I don't wanna put anybody through that. Anywhere else.
Three hundred feet should help.
Yeah.
Cause it's gonna be right next door on your window.
Blowing the wrong way. Can you control the wind?
Well, I think we're gonna learn a lot in the, the next couple of months with the, the couple grows that are gonna be happening in town, so that's gonna guide us a bit too, assuming they get plants in the ground.
As I say, they're not a hundred percent confident in that. They're gonna get their plants in.
They're not confident in that? No?
I don't think so. I've been looking at-
The CCC meets in August. Their final walkthrough has to be done by, I think it was, m- whatever Monday, the twenty-seventh, I think, is for the CCC representative to make their recommendation to the board to vote on allowing their license. Um, so they're not looking at getting a license until late August.
Which is much later than they need in order to be able to get something.
But we will still be able to grow in a hoop house.
Yes.
But.
But not the other, sorry.
So, we'll see.
Yeah.
So, a couple of other que- things that were on my list is, is also, it's not clear to me, i- outdoor, whether outdoor grow excludes or includes greenhouses. It's just not clear to me. Does it?
Well, I bet. I believe it includes, it's part of the operation.
Okay, so.
Am I wrong?
Um, possibly.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, greenhouses are allowed in our residential districts, okay? So, and these are not like conventional greenhouses, but-
Part of a special permit too, wouldn't that change?
Well, I just think we should say there are or they aren't allowed, and if they are allowed, the size, personally. And I don't, I don't have any problem with allowing them as long as people understand that these have grow lights under covers. It's not like tomatoes, you know, and it a lot of water use and-
I mean, the problem with greenhouses, I think, is in a residential area is, is that it can make something look very, very rapidly as a commercial enterprise.
Yes.
And so, again, if you are, if, if you have bought a piece of property in a residential s- uh, area and you suddenly see big greenhouses coming up, yes, it is agricultural, but it is. It is. It has this, it has this look of commercial.
But on the side of, other side of that coin, if this property is large enough and set back fair enough in the residential area, which we have, I think, I think you should have not an open door, but a way to allow that.
But, so the question, the question is more, do you have a three-acre lot where you put two acres worth of greenhouses and still have whatever technical offsets you have?
I'm saying like a sixty, if, if somebody has a big piece of property that they wanna possibly sell for an operation, I think we should have something in that bylaw that allows a special permit under special circumstances. I don't want, I, I don't want a bylaw to lock everything out. As long as you can depend on the town or the, the point of it.
Not disagreeing about this here. I think we need to be very conscious, conscientious about the impact that something like that can have on the neighborhood and on the residents who are abutters.
But if it's big enough parcel, cause we're, we've always talked about trying to bring in more business, I don't want a pot farm next to me on the hundred acres behind me, um, if they sell that, but is that feasible to look at? Also, I don't know. I'm just, I wanted to throw it out there for everybody to think about.
We could go again with the, you know, tier one, five acres, tier two, ten, you get up to, I mean, something like that.
That potentially fixes a lot of those problems just on the town.
I haven't seen that done in the ones I looked at, but I don't know why you couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Also, um, on my list is, I think we need to limit the number of pot shops, which we're allowed to do. It's, I don't think-
Communities got a lot.
And it's supposed to be not less than, what is it, twenty percent of what you have, or like, anyway, it would be one.
It's not more, not more than.
There's another one in Gardner Road, in Gardner, six, seven miles up the road.
Yeah.
They're building, they're putting the building up now.
Oh, really? And there's already one up the road?
There is.
They haven't gone for their special permit yet. They, no, it's just they have had a host community agreement, but they've never, yeah, so the building is there, but they haven't gone forward with anything.
Well, I just think-
Another thing, I think it's something to look at, because you don't want ten, fifteen of these things, yeah.
So, if you could jot that down. And then I also don't wanna see, just like with the solar fields, I don't wanna see clear cutting of woods to plant marijuana, so.
Very, very, very important.
Not, yeah.
So, there were, um, there were a couple of towns that had green energy requirements for new builds. Is that something that we're interested in looking at or do we?
So, if you're gonna build or put this up, like roof a bit, if you're gonna put a regular roof, you gotta put solar panels.
That twenty-five percent of it was gonna come from, um,
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy, yeah.
It's like, one of the communities around is you drive down the road and all you see is solar fields.
The other thing I think is important for us to keep into consideration for something like this here is, is, I mean, we got into an interesting uh, situation here with, uh, uh, with this freezer facilities and things of that nature. I, I think we need to very clearly establish wh- what, what can and cannot be allowed.
I did see a town that specifically excluded any operation in trailers.
I, I, I think that's probably something that we need to very much look at. And the other thing that comes along with this here is, is that power and the use of generators. Main reason I'm bringing this up is, is that noise abatement is becoming a much larger issue for our communities, because if people do require to have a backup generator, that's something that is different, whereas if you have no power and you're gonna be completely reliant on a generator, which is going to be running twenty-four hours a day, and the impact that that has.
On the other side of that, if it's only gonna be a temporary operation for like just like this one that's supposed to start up now, until they're done with it, it's only gonna last a few months. Um, and they're only gonna start the refrigeration up for a short period of time to get them out of there. I think we should think, have that in the back of our minds when we're writing this too. Because a temporary thing, and I, and I, I didn't wanna bring this up at the last meeting, but there was a septic system going in across the street over here, and they brought the excavator in on a huge tractor trailer, flatbed. And the workers get out, they block the traffic, and it took them quite a few minutes to maneuver and get it in, and they unloaded, and then they brought it out. Dropping those freezers off on Gardner Road is no different operation. It's the same thing. I, I think a lot of that just went a little too far. It's not a big deal if you're dropping it off once and then you're gonna pick it up later and it's done. I, I, I think we need to keep that in perspective. If they're gonna do it two or three times a day, and you're gonna block the road and create all the problem, you're gonna have all this noise, that's a totally different story.
The question though is, is what is, what does the law, what does our law say? And I think our law, I, I mean, Bill brought up the issue, and I think he brought it because that's, it, it is very clearly stated that you have to come in, you cannot back up into, in, into these, uh-
All these companies that come in and back your tractor trails and we should have them stop their operation?
No, that, I mean, I, I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just sta- I mean, what is, what is, what is the requirement? And so the question-
Right now, you're saying, if, if I come into my company and wanna do work on this property over here, I can't pull in or, I, I can't back out of that property? So, he means I can't work there. Because I have to bring the excavator and unload it on dirt, because I can't put it on paper.
I understand the issue of practicality. The question here is, is what is the law state? If the law needs to be looked at and we need to therefore review that.
We-
But that, that, my, my, my question is, my concern here is, is are we, are we bending the law or are we following the law? And is the, is, the, does, does the law allow you for special circumstances such as that? And does that fall within that purview or not?
Right, okay.
So, I think we need to investigate that. That's all I'm saying here.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. I wanted to throw that in there because I've, I've seen it too many times that it's allowed, but if it's gonna be an ongoing thing every day, no. But if I'm bringing this truck in, I'm dropping this off, and then I'm parking it, and then I'm gonna leave with it two months later.
And, uh, in my quick look at a few, I didn't see anybody addressing anything like that in any of their bylaws for this.
Okay.
But I, I think what he was talking about up there was the fact that he didn't have power.
Yeah.
And National Grid wasn't accommodating, and so he'd get this grow in, and I think that's what, and I could be wrong, but that's what I was hearing. It was, it was just a
And we, and we said, we did say he could not back in those freezer trucks, because it was sixty-eight, but that was just specific to that, his project. So, we need to think about that.
Okay.
Do you have enough to go on?
Yes.
We've sat here a long time. I'll take a mo- and you can, you could, we'll put you on next time, see how far you can get. My goal is to have something we could present it in the fall. Maybe that's optimistic, but.
I think that might be a little ambitious, but I think we have two of those.
Well, considering you took us two years for the signed by law.
Well, the other side is, is we, we also, we should reach out to industry about this too. We shouldn't just be doing this in a, a vacuum. And whether it is we reach out to the shops that are in town or else we reach out to the Growers Association, we, we should at least be requesting a comment to help validate our process.
There is a farmers group in town, you know, the Organization of Farms, plus the CDC.
Are you talking farmers or, or marijuana farmers?
Marijuana growers specifically.
Is there an organization, oh, I know about in town, but there are farmers in town, but yeah, there's a marijuana growers.
Yeah, there were like three or four marijuana grower organizations, but I couldn't find out which one of them was actually credible, because it looked like some of them were just people putting up Facebook pages.
I have, do you think they're direct con- I have a direct contact at CCC. I don't know if that would help. I have, do you think they're direct con, I have a direct contact at the C C C, I don't know if that would help, he probably knows all the groups.
I think that might help.
Yeah, yes, but to, when you go to the E D C meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Tell them what we're up to.
Yeah.
Say we like their, what they think about.
What do you think, yeah?
Okay, so our next meeting, guys, is?
The fifth of August.
August fifth. We'll see what.
We already have an A and R that was submitted today, so the plans are already, you know.
August what?
August fifth.
Here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Are we good?
Yes, ma'am, I'll make that motion to a chairman.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Bill.
I second that motion.
I'm in clutch.
Am I good?
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.